Good morning, and I follow the comments while even on the committee of the whole meeting to orders. Welcome, everybody. And we like to recognize that this meeting has been held on the traditional territory of the Lilawat Nation. entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. Welcome, John French. Squamish. Moved by Director French, seconded by Director Victor. In the opposition, the in the land. The agenda is approved. We don't have a closed meeting, but we do have a delegation to welcome Gareth Bradley, Senior Sergeant, Sea Sky RCMP. For review and view into 2024. Welcome Gareth. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody for having me. My Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley. Been in the Sea Sky for 11 years now. And yeah, I appreciate your time for today. Thank you. Yeah, we'll go through this. I now have 10 minutes, so make it high level for you. And make it clear. Yeah, next slide, please. So it's just Sea Sky RCP. As you may or may not know, we cover a large area, which includes Bowen Island, Squamish and Whistler. We're a hybrid integrated detachment model. Next slide. Not too many changes over the last few years. We'd like to note that Corporal Jim Gilmore is up in the Pemberton area now from Whistler. Spent seconded for some time, and we have a new promotion on Bowen Island. Robert Notari. Next slide. And then we'll just get right into the stats for the electoral areas. Next slide, please. So Squamish RCP Rural, which includes Electoral Area D, includes Free Creek, Britannia Beach, Ring Creek and Squamish Valley. So this is a overview of our stats that our crime analyst in EDIV did over the last couple of months. Everything seems to be trending on the downward side, very typical of the area. Our persons offenses and violent crime has had a little bit of an uptick. I was trying to dig into some of the harassment pieces there. As you can see, it's 1,200% going from one to 13. Not a huge number, but still these types of offenses include neighbor disputes or landlord tenancy issues. It's what we see up in the valley. Our property crime has been on the decline of note across the Sea Sky. Our frauds have seen a significant increase. These are fairly sophisticated text scams, email scams, or even phone call scams of all different types of natures. They're very difficult to investigate, mostly because the offenders are overseas. So it becomes a super complex investigation that doesn't generally lead into charges. So focusing on that, seeing these trends, we're going to, for the 2024 year, we're going to look at education for folks across the region. So we'll focus on that. And then just on this slide in Area D for mental health, seen a significant decrease over last, last year, which is a good stat to highlight. Next slide, please. Our traffic offenses, very topical, has seen an increased number of road and highway closures from last year. Obviously, we continue work with Modi and Miller Cap at a fairly high level. And we do what we can to divert traffic in an efficient way. It's very area dependent on how big the crime scene is when we do have a major collision. But we do everything we can to get that highway open as fast as we can because we understand people need to get home and get to where they're going. So. And then just our, yeah, overall persons crimes, as I mentioned, it's very consistent increase over the last year for the entire region. Next slide, please. This is a, we deem it as Whistler Rural. It's a portion of Electoral Area C. It bridges from Wedwood down to border Pemberton. So it's a bit of more rural area. For these stats, you can see they're fairly low numbers across the range. So I would point out missing persons is a fairly large category in this because it's all backcountry. So we saw a significant decrease in our missing persons reports. Probably going to attribute that to the milder weather that we've had over the last, well, the entire winter. It's favorable weather conditions, so lots of decreased SAR calls are declining. So. Yeah. That's that area. We'll talk about the next slide from the traffic perspective in the same area. It was all trending in a downward, a downward trend for that area. It's a very small segment of the highway. So I would like to talk about the next slide, and we'll talk about electoral, the majority of Electoral Area C. Sorry, next slide. So this is what we call Pemberton Rural. Very typical, our, again, our violent crime assaults, our sex assaults are seen on increase. We're seeing that across the region, but we've been working really hard with our partnership agencies to build capacity, to build their trauma-informed response, work where there are community partners, Sea Sky Community Services, to develop that outreach. And increased reporting is always welcomed in these areas because we know it's highly under-reported. And then you can see our property crime in the section in Pemberton is all on the decline as well as our missing persons reports in this area as well. Next slide, please. Collisions kind of seen a little bit of an uptick on our road race safety. It's important for Pemberton members to be out there, obviously doing road, road safety and road enforcement. And we're looking at, always looking at different ways to implement strategies to present that throughout, throughout the region with enforcement activities and obviously community collaboration for certain things that are going on in the, in the areas. Yeah, next slide. So this is our overall strategic plan. So each one of the areas had a town hall, and from that town hall, these, these infographics were created with community input. So these are all comments from the community that were people who were intended online and in person. We're able to create kind of like an updated mission, vision and values for our Sea Sky policing. Excellent. I'll just skip through to the next slide. So some enforcement pillars that we did last year, we both in our north, we call it North Zone and South Zone, so Squamish, Bowen and Pemberton and Whistler. We were able to effectively staff some of our community response teams, which is our special specialty community units made up of Corporal and a couple of constables in that we've realigned to put some processes in place in Squamish, and we're working towards building capacity in Whistler and Pemberton for the mobile incident crisis response cars. So that's where investigator will be paired up with a community social worker or a community nurse, and they'll be able to go out into the communities to do proactive follow-up for people that are in crisis. So we're super excited about that program being implemented across the Sea Sky. And again, obviously, our main focus in Squamish Valley and up in the Electoral Area C is enforcement with our partner agencies on the high-volume weekends, long weekends, and just doing back, backcountry enforcement generally concerning wildfires, wildfire events, firearm shooting, that sort of thing. So I know there's some changes in the regulations up in Squamish Valley for no shooting zones last year, which is a finable amount, so for the entire Elahoe area. And then our URSU and BC Highway Patrols, URSU being our Integrated Road Safety Units, their provincial unit specifically comes up to the highway to do traffic enforcement. In our education and training, we have an influx of new members over the last year coming from all different parts of the province and from Alberta. That includes Pemberton, Whistler and Squamish. So that onboarding of area knowledge and getting everybody up to speed on local area processes is super important for us moving forward. So we're excited to have a lot more people in the area to work. Excitedness. Our crew units focused on school and our Pemberton detachment focused on school and youth engagement in the community. And we're looking to do some open houses for all the detachments in the 2024 area. Sorry, 2024 year. Next two slides, please. Thank you. Last year, Whistler saw a couple of members receive Lex Awards. This is an award given out by the province where a member has achieved a 25, achieved 25 impaired driving charges, just personally in themselves. So not. Wow, that came out wrong. Should have rehearsed that one. I'm sorry.
I want to go tech.
They have, yeah. They have charged, charged 25 more people with impaired driving offenses. So it's a significant award if you can reach that milestone. So it's super proud that two were All-Stars. And we really focused out last year on our impaired driving numbers. And it, I think, yeah, I think five and three in Squamish met that threshold in 2023. So it's on the increase, which is good, means we're always doing proactive work and keeping the roads safe. Multiple members were also recognized commanding officers awards for various lifesaving files where they're put into harm's way to save somebody, or, you know, stopped a high-risk vehicle and took down an offender. So, yeah, it's good to recognize the folks doing the good work. So. And just building our workplace culture. It's a passion for me to build mental health, wellness and resiliency in our, in our teams. It's going to be more effective for them in the long term and help getting folks on track and team-building exercises within our detachment. This year, Sasha Banks in Whistler has worked really hard to bring the Women's Leadership Institute to Whistler. They're holding a conference where law enforcement, women in law enforcement come and talk about various issues, and that's happening in the next few months. So super proud of that and the work she's done on that. Next slide, please. These are just all the infographics for the different towns that we visited. And yeah, so Pemberton's in there, Bowen and Squamish and Whistler. Next slide. And yeah, so we're looking to obviously continue our work with everybody being, coming in and being new. Continuity and building capacity in our emergency management planning is very important for me. It's one of our top priorities. Just given the unpredictability of our climate situations and emergency management pieces that we've had. We just completed a major tabletop exercise with the entire region a couple of weeks ago, which was fantastic. I was, yeah, I was outstanded by the work that was happening in the, in the room by everybody because that's not their normal day job. So everybody stepped up and it was, it was really well, well-attended and everybody put 100% in. So I was super encouraged to see that. And then working with SLRD Emergency Management Team, we did the Air Action Report for the atmosphere for whatever happened event that happened a couple of months ago. Also engagement with Lilawat and Squamish Nations for relationship building is important to us as well. Also meeting with the new CAO in, in a couple of weeks, Carrie. So and then topical is the engagement with Free Creek and Britannia Beach Expansion of their communities and figuring out what that looks like long-term. And then continued work with our BC Parks, NROs and Conservation Office engagement in our backcountry policing. As you can see, there's a lot of photos of me in this presentation. Apparently, I like to be out in the mounds, out in lakes. And yeah, I, it's this area and, you know, having the stewardship to do the protection piece is, is super important for me. Emergency management is important for me. So being connected with those communities is also, you know, one of my top priorities. We're looking at developing a backcountry policing model within Sea Sky. It's kind of like a longer-term strategy. And then obviously, the highlights are these micro, microcar positions where these nurses and clinicians and members can go out into the communities and help people proactively. So, thank you.
Thank you, Staff Sergeant Bradley. And Director Mack, please go ahead.
Do you still have your boat patrols on Anderson?
Yes.
As you're able to.
Yeah, as we're able to. So we only have one small rib boat, but we have to share it between the four detachments. So yes, in essence, we do have that capability for sure, and that is part of the plan moving forward. But we also have to take the boat down to Bowen. Squamish houses the boat because it's kind of central. But yeah, those.
But you have your own boat now.
We do, yes.
Fun point, you know. You're looking to get one. So that's good because I know just from feedback I get, you're very well, you know, accepted on the lake. It's it's really good to have you there, especially on, you know, on the busy weekends, well, every weekend.
Yeah, with turnover. So it's, those courses are only offered at certain times of the year, and they're very hard to get. So it's just, and again, we have to build up our capacity to have specifically boat-trained members to go out and do that to be safe. So. Yeah, well, that's one of our areas of growth, and we'll be looking at that. So we used to have one member that transferred to our Marine, our RCP Marine section from Whistler, and he was very much in charge of that area. So. It's a big goal to fail, but that's part of our planning. So.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yep, Director Penningill, and then Director Richmond.
Yeah, thanks. We had a bit of bit of a preview of the presentation in Squamish. And one of the things you didn't mention today, but I know you're working on at least in Squamish is response to people that are neurodivergent. And so I want to give you an opportunity if you want to touch on that a bit. But a little bit related to that is, you know, the, the microcar stuff in Squamish at least seem to be, you know, some of the more Squamish-focused organizations are partners in that. How does it work across the region when you get into area districts? Who, who are your contacts and who's the sort of community support on that? Is it VCH mostly, or how does that happen?
Yeah, so we're working in partnership with Vancouver Health to develop, develop, develop those models and expand that out. So there's no current funding for that. Like, we have an investigator in Whistler, but we're working towards building that capacity in, in Whistler from the VCH side. And I think there's a pilot project moving forward, and that will hopefully build into Pemberton as well. But yeah, it does get a little bit tricky with boundaries and things like that. So.
Director Richmond?
Thanks. I'm really interested to hear as it comes out more about the backcountry policing plan, I think. Across our region, we, we face issues with folks in our, in our backcountry coming to enjoy the area, which, which we invite them to do, but there's, it says, you know, it's hard to manage, and, and we've collectively been sort of crying for more boots on the ground over the years to just to manage everything from human waste, wildlife conflict, and, and I would say top of mind being wildfire. And so as you put that plan together, if there's anything local government can do to help inform some of that, because we know our areas in terms of what's, what's hard hit, but maybe even more importantly, if, and I'd be curious to know what kind of interministry support you're going to get for that, you know, when, when folks are going down FSRs or they're in provincial parks, are you getting the resources the RCP need from other ministries, from FNRR, FLNRO or whoever to support those activities? Because we would really like to see a little bit more management of the backcountry, again, especially with wildfire season around the corner. So is there anything as you're building that plan that we can help with local government or inform? Please make the call.
Yeah, there'll definitely be a consultative process for that and seeking inputs. What that looks like, obviously, you guys all know your areas really well. And yeah, we'll build that in, obviously. But would you have a small provincial budget to do backcountry policing initiatives? You know, could it be more? Absolutely. You know, and we build that capacity in to make sure members are applying the laws and what to look out for and things like that. But definitely, we can, you know, funding is, you know, we have a certain amount of funding, so we have to operate within that budget.
Again, if you need support for advocacy for funding for that sort of activity, I think you might find that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. And I have Director Hoffel, Director DeMare, and then Director Morgan. And then I think we should probably stop it there. So you're welcome for having me. Okay, go ahead, Laurie.
Thank you for your report. So yeah, just to capture on what Director Richmond said, any takeaways that happened that we can do for the backcountry, you know, over in our area too, would be, would be helpful. So if they come not only to the to the municipalities, but to the region, that would be great. But I wanted to ask you, you said something about you were going to do training when you were talking about like, and I'm going to talk about particularly telephone scams and with seniors. So often I will, a couple of times a year anyways, I try and put it on my Facebook page or whatever about tell us's call control, because I find that seniors in particular like somebody to talk to. They're lonely. So when those phone calls come through, and they come through at an alarming rate sometimes. And, and I think once you pick up, there's nobody there. But once you pick up and then they hang up, then they know that somebody is picking up. But call control makes you actually push that number that says, you know, this, this number has call control, press six or whatever. And that has alleviated a lot of those calls. So I hope that, you know, when you're in your, your training, that is something that and again, with seniors is, is a big one. But I mean, they drive me crazy, so I put it on. And it works like a charm, and it's super easy to do through tell.
But frauds are complex, they're multifaceted, get very complicated when you're dealing with banks and, you know, you see every, we have to work with our business partners as well, right? A lot of folks who might go in and buy iTunes cards and then give the pins over. That's another way where people come to the front door and say like, hey, you know, or they have a bit of information about somebody and, you know, somebody's in trouble and they need help or whatnot. So. Or a fake piece of jewelry is like, you know, they're representing it as this, and there's a variety of different things that we need to cover. So.
And I know that, like, one of the emails went out with my name on it, and somebody actually bought a, an Amazon $500 card and, you know, and then contacted me. But, yeah. And then, but then it was too late, you know, I felt terrible about that. But so that, that kind of prompted me to start, you know, advocating for that. And, and like I said, tell us, call control is just one piece of it, but it's a really important piece. So.
Yeah, absolutely. We have to build our strategy around that about education.
Thank you. Thank you, Director DeMare.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I've got just one question. On the Squamish Valley, you mentioned no shooting zone and being able to find people. Is that through the provincial government?
Uh, yes, yeah, NRO's Natural Resource Office has worked really hard to get that new shooting area. And we're giving, I can't remember this, this section, but yeah, that's no shooting zone starts from the gravel and goes all the way up to the Elahoe. It was only a small segment. But it's, it's carried all the way up now. So.
Yeah, just curious, if, if people have tags for hunting, are they able to hunt in there?
Yes, so it's recreational shooting. There's a difference. So you can still hunt, hunt in that peak. And it's again, for 400 meters off the roadway.
Yeah. We've got very similar up in Area E, up in the reserve valley. But there's no finding.
Right.
And it's SLRD.
Yeah.
No shooting zones.
Yes, yeah.
Wrong communities.
Definitely have more work and have an offline conversation about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report. We heard from Sasha Banks, I think, last week at, at our committee hall, and with decriminalization having been, it's been over, just over a year now. What has that looked like in the Sea Sky? I know what it's been like in Whistler, but what has that looked like?
Yeah, overall, like, I think you can see the numbers. It's, it's, we're not seizing drugs. We're not doing anything like that. We're more advocates to help people and hand out the resource cards when we do. And yeah, it's like, we weren't really doing it before. There's not a lot of folks that come into our contact that were, you know, randomly seizing drugs or anything like that. Obviously, yeah, every area's got a different concern, for sure.
Are you seeing more public use or?
No.
No, no. Yeah, thank you.
One more question, Director DeJean, did you want to add something?
Hi, yeah, I was just on, I live in Squamish Valley, and it was just on the no shooting zone. I was just curious if there was public education or outreach for the community to be aware of that? Because I know that there is still a shooting range off of one of the Forest Service roads, and we were out a couple of months ago, and people were still shooting. So I actually wasn't personally aware of that. So I just didn't know how that was getting put out to the local community.
Yeah, I think there was a bit of a campaign online, but obviously that's select if you're not seeking that or learning that. But yeah. And I haven't been up in a while. I can't remember if the sign, signage is up there yet.
Yeah, it might be something to post on our, our local residents page too, just to help get the awareness.
Absolutely. Yeah. I know it was a huge concern because there's multiple different sites up there.
Well, thank you, Staff Sergeant Bradley, with that. Just thank you for your presentation. And we're going to. Now, I need to ask the board to indulge in the change of the approval of the agenda.
This guy in Squamish.
And move the presentation by Jeanette and Nadon up now on Indigenous Relations. She has some other commitments, and so we're going to hear from her now.
Correct.
Okay. So you might have a minute to sit there before we wait for Jeanette to join us.
So I said, can you tell him, give him my contact?
So is that you tell them?
And she said, come down tonight. So she sets it up and she says all that. This sounds sketchy. She said, well, my husband's on Facebook.
Yes.
Yeah, he said, he wouldn't fucking tell me. I can't buy the break off. I had one of those really guys. I was like.
Shall we come out of the order and invite Jeanette to the air? She is. Good morning, Miss Nadon. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone.
Five points on the agenda.
Yes. Uh, thanks, everyone. Jeanette Naden, Indigenous Relations Advisor with the SLRD. I'm here to present an update on the SLRD's Indigenous Relations Truth and Reconciliation function. Specifically with respect to the planned use of the funding that was recommended as part of the SLRD's 2024 Financial Plan for Indigenous Relations Truth and Reconciliation. So I'll just briefly go through the report that was included on the agenda. Back in September, when I presented the direction request report, the board had directed staff to explore options to apply the unallocated funds from our Relationship Building Reserve in truth, in the truth and reconciliation, to start building a foundation and empathy prior to our 2024 actions to move forward into reconciliation. And with that also that we scope costs for training and increasing staff capacity for Indigenous Relations. So since that time, we've been working towards that. We, I also included in sorry, the, the board made a resolution about the Nukun Toal gathering as well at that meeting. And so I'll be touching on that as well this morning. But back in September with that direction request report, the board had determined that there were four main priorities with respect to Indigenous Relations and reconciliation. The first was to recognize a long-term, complex nature of the work. The first was to recognize the long-term, complex nature of the work and to begin by setting a strong foundation through the development of a strategic Indigenous Relations Truth and Reconciliation framework. Also, that continued relationship building was a priority that we needed to increase our organizational capacity by embedding cultural awareness and sensitivity training. And also that we needed to continue learning about Indigenous rights. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission calls to action and and the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. So the the, what staff has proposed that we would do is hire a consultant that will help us develop an Indigenous Relations Truth and Reconciliation framework for the organization. And the process to develop that framework is, we're planning to begin with setting a very strong foundation by incorporating quite a bit of training in advance of a strategic planning workshop. And then following the strategic planning workshop, we would take that information and the consultant would work with us to develop the framework. So we we got three proposals to do the work and all of them came back with around a very similar budget of about forty to forty five thousand dollars to do the work, which would include the training component. So the the approach is that they would review the existing materials and commitments and best practices, conduct interviews with senior staff, board members, and key First Nations contacts to more fully assess the situation, identify potential issues, define our aspirations and confirm our training needs. And then provide training for the board and staff on a range of topics, including Indigenous worldview, cultural safety, hidden bias, to build a strong foundation for the workshop. And then conducting a strategic planning workshop to assess our organizational readiness, define our vision for reconciliation, articulate core values and principles, and confirm our strategic themes and goals. And then identify those key foundational actions that we need to do to move forward to advance the work. And then creating a preliminary framework, which would be then sent out for feedback and then finalizing the framework. So that's basically the framework in a nutshell, and I'll 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 take questions on that in a moment. I just wanted to touch on the other things that we've been up to. With respect to the continued relationship building, we are working towards holding a Nukun Toal Regional Gathering with the LeWatt Nation and the Village of Pemberton that's scheduled for May the twenty fourth. So I hope everybody has that in their calendars. I've received our RSVPs from almost everybody now, I think, so thank you very much. We're looking, originally, we were, we wanted to focus that on the United Nations Declaration and talk about what the village and the SLRD were up to in terms of reconciliation and hear from LeWatt Nation about sort of what their expectations were, and we're still planning to do that. But we're looking at doing it in a way that will incorporate more storytelling. We're going to be holding the gathering up at the site of the Coast Mountain Outdoor School. So that's about twenty five minutes, sorry, twenty five kilometers north of Pemberton. And that particular venue was basically, it was owned by the school district and given back to LeWatt Nation in twenty twenty two. So it's an excellent example of land back. We've also learned from LeWatt Nation that it was the site of a former LeWatt Village. And so there's a lot of opportunity for us to sort of weave stories of of LeWatt culture and the the truth of what happened and the land back story while talking about Indigenous self-determination and the United Nations Declaration. And hopefully just creating a really experiential learning opportunity and lots of opportunity for dialogue for the people who are there. So that's sort of what we're, the concept that we're that we're working on, the the Nukun Toal Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting met last February and sort of came up with that concept, so now staff is working towards executing that. And in the north, District of Lilawatt and the Lilawatt Tribal Council and the SLRD staff have met a couple of times to confirm that we do still want to have leadership gatherings, at least one in twenty twenty four. My under, we were supposed to have a meeting this afternoon, but unfortunately I had to cancel it due to a personal commitment. But we'll be rescheduling that for later, later this month. But the intent certainly is that we will hold at least one leadership gathering, and I did hear from Jim MacArthur at the Tribal Council. And they've been given an extension on their grant, so we have until December to hold that meeting, which is great. The third priority was organizational change through education and training. And so staff has recommended a budget of twenty five thousand dollars for this in twenty twenty four. And we're proposing that we use that funding to do the training that's going to help inform the development of our of our reconciliation framework. So we'd be working with a consultant to do two half-day online trainings and then one full-day training for staff and the board on a variety of topics, including cultivating safe spaces, the United Nations Declaration, Indigenous worldview, cultural intelligence and cultural safety protocols, hidden bias, and engagement strategy best practices. And I think in terms of the acting on the the UN Declaration, I I've shared a couple of resources in there for the board. I also wanted to just highlight that the local, Lower Mainland Local Government Association through their AGM next month. I believe they're planning to hold a Indigenous-led panel discussion on the UN Declaration. So hopefully people have RSVPed and will be attending that because I think that will be a really good learning opportunity to hear straight from First Nations and Indigenous people about the UN Declaration and why why it's important and having that discussion. And I think that's that's sort of it in a nutshell, and I guess I just wanted to say thank you very much and I will open it up for questions.
Thank you, Jeanette Nadon, and I'm looking around the table to see if board members would like to. Yes, Director Hettigell.
Yeah, the first one, just a confirmation, because we heard about some of the things that the board has been asked to support funding-wise. Just want to make sure that made it into what we approved yesterday. And then just a a personal request a little bit, because this all sounds fantastic. The the challenges managing personal schedules and commitments and so the more we can include uncommitted the whole days or makes it a little bit easier, but to find a way, no matter what it's scheduled, but that would help a lot for me personally.
Yes, thank you. And Director Hoffel.
So thank you for that presentation. I think that that's a good framework and it will give us a clear vision on what our role is regionally. And having First Nation input, I think will really aid us in developing that that framework for our organization. My question is actually for the online training, is that, is that, will that be a scheduled daytime or is that something that we can access when we can access it? Is there an option?
It will be, this particular training will be scheduled because we'll be hiring the consultant and delivering it live. So this particular training will be scheduled and we'll be loo- looking to try and coordinate that so that it fits the most, you know, so that it's works for the most people, I guess I would say.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other way of hands.
I want to receive the information.
Mayor is moving to receive your report. Thank you very much, Jeanette, and seconded by Director Lurker. Seeing none.
Thanks, Jeanette.
Best wishes on your travels today.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see everybody.
After the week takes five minute recess, you know, we'll move to the next. We'll go to staff reports, so let me person start it. Would you like to move after?
We'll get out a little bit very quick.
Okay, we'll hear from the CAO quickly and then in five minutes, right?
I just need a coffee.
Oh, good morning, everyone. I I have nothing to request.
Okay. Order to ten.
Four-minute break now.
We will have strategic plan and next steps.
Morning, Patricia Westerholm, Director of Communications Engagement for the Squamish Lilawatt Regional District. And I'm here today to provide the board with a summary of the strategic planning process and to request a decision on approval of the draft strategic plan with a new purpose statement and slightly revised vision and mission statements, as well as a plan on a page, which you will see shortly. Next slide, please, Avat. So just wanted to recap a little bit about where we've been in this process. This isn't the first time that you've had me here to talk about strategic planning. This work started with the board back in December of twenty twenty two with the board priority setting exercise at the Community Center. And then we continued with that work through twenty twenty three with the development of our performance reporting documents and board strategic planning workshops. The last update that the board had on this work was in July when staff advised that a draft strategic plan would be developed and brought back to the board in September. And then the rest of July unfolded, as did our historic Emergency Operations Center activation, the longest ever E O C activation, I think, in the history of the SLRD, which continues with the recovery process to this day, which several staff members are still very much engaged in, including myself. So basically what that boils down to is that the work on the strat plan came to a bit of a speechy hole, sadly. We had also, as you know, change in leadership at the CAO level. And the interim CAO and myself both were refocused our work to focus on the E O C operations. But all that being said, I'm very happy to be here today with the draft strategic plan and being able to pick up this work again and move forward. So we're going to talk a little bit more about that and just walk through that plan with you. Next slide, please. So this is just, again, a little bit of a welcome news today, just to draft, share this draft plan, as well as a plan on the page, which you haven't seen. And for your consideration and talk a little bit about the process for moving forward with the notion that we would review again in the fall, just to make sure that the priorities still align for the board. Not that we would redo this process again, but just to revisit it. Next slide, please. So this is the first page of the strategic plan. Next slide. Table of contents is really straightforward. Next slide, please. Very brief overview of the regional district, how we came to be and what we are. Next slide, please, Avat. Photos of the Board of Directors. Next slide, please. Message as approved from the Board Chair. Very straightforward as well. Next slide, please. This is where I think we should pause for a minute, just to reflect on the work that the board did on this last year. You will recall that we did some workshops, workshop sessions on reviewing our current vision, mission, and value statements. Those are the ones on the screen now. And we had a lot of input from the board, we also took that to the staff level for input. And when we went back and revisited all of those notes and the comments and the feedback, really found that we weren't actually very too too far off from where the board felt that the SLRD should be in terms of its vision, mission, and values. So we have made some very slight modifications, which I will present now. Next slide, please, Avat. At the, really the direction of the former, excuse me, CAO, we did add a purpose statement to the these statements for the board to consider. So we haven't had that in the past. We do talk on the website about the role of the regional district, but haven't just succinctly come up with a statement to summarize our purpose. So we've proposed that our purpose statement could be that we serve as trusted stewards of the region, fostering an environment where communities and residents thrive. Now, just if we, we don't need to go back to the slide, but our current vision statement is that the Squamish Lilawatt Regional District will lead regional governance in the province of B C through cooperation and cohesive participation by its members. And there was a lot of discussion around that. When we look at the regional growth strategy as that sort of overarching document, it has its own vision statement in there as well. So we wanted to, we took that statement and kind of incorporated it into this existing vision statement and modified slightly. So the proposed new vision statement is that the Squamish Lilawatt Regional District will lead regional governance by promoting collaboration and engagement among its members, partners, and all levels of government. Our vision for the region is one comprised of diverse, distinct, distinct and livable communities that share a commitment to practice economic, social, and environmental sustainability. And that second sentence was pulled from the R G S. And then the mission statement, we didn't really change this much at all, basically just added another word. So the original mission statement said that the Squamish Lilawatt Regional District's mission is to enhance the quality of life of constituents through the facilitation of regional and community services for the benefit of present and future generations. And we've just added the word delivery in there. So the new proposed statement is that the Squamish Lilawatt Regional District's mission is to enhance the quality of life of constituents through the facilitation and delivery of regional and community services for the benefit of present and future generations. And then the value statements did not change. And they remain to govern with courage, integrity, and respect in an open, honest, and responsible manner, using both common sense and the best available information to respect social, environmental, and economic values, values and limitations while maintaining a high quality of life in all areas of our diverse region. We can continue to walk through the rest of the strat plan. So this slide really just talks about that hierarchy of plans and talks about the why, the what, the how, and the do. And so here we're just outlining that the why is aligning with that regional growth strategy, which is our twenty-year horizon document, five-year review cycle, and informs master plans and official community plans of the areas that are participating. And then the what is this strategic plan, which aims to establish the overall direction and priority areas for the regional district for a four-year term and provides a high-level overview of what the board wishes to accomplish during the term of office. So this is where we get back into some of that process piece where ideally at the start of each new mandate, when a board is elected, we would do a full sum review of the strategic plan. And then the other plans that fall out from that would just be updated as needed. And that comes, that's the how and the do. So the how is that corporate action plan, and then the do is our departmental and individual work plans. Next slide, please. So this slide is really, these are the big ideas. So when we did the strategic planning workshops, we, the board threw out a lot of ideas, things that we that you felt were priorities for the regional district, and you'll recall, we had the poster sheets and we met in different rooms and did a lot of good work there. When we went back and looked at all of that information, we were really able to identify some theme areas, priority areas, pillars, if you will, that really did a good job of encapsulating all of that work. So when we look at this slide, we're really, we've been talking about this strat plan internally as a bit of a strat plan light document, because this is where we've captured the themes, but we haven't dialed into the goals and objectives under each of these. So that might be work that the board would like to do in the future through a more robust strategic planning session. But for now, this captures and enables to move forward, enables us to move forward with a strategic plan capturing those themed areas that have been identified. So we've highlighted community well-being and livability, and under there, we've slotted affordable housing and regional transit for now. Emergency planning, response, and recovery with fire services review, fire smart program implementation, and E O C tabletop exercises and training. Truth reconciliation and relationships, Indigenous relations under it, community partnerships, government partnerships, sustainability, which includes. Sustainability, which includes economic sustainability, environmental sustainability and cultural sustainability. Responsible governance and service excellence, including performance management, governance excellence, service capacity alignment. And advocacy. And under there, we have regional transit, regional health and rural road service. Next slide, please. The last slide, or sorry, the last page of the strat plan is the message from the Chief Administrative Officer, which is also very straightforward. Next slide, please, Avat. So next steps is, you know, we have some work to do still on the process development in the request for. Decision report that was included in your agenda package. We touched a bit on. The process of entering into an agreement with the government frameworks works. Government Frameworks Group for developing reports and improving our internal process. Work plan flow and that kind of work. That work was also delayed last year. So the aim is and. Through the chair, the C O may wish to speak to this as well, but the goal is to. Get back on track with that work with implementation potentially for later this year that will help us with. Those reporting pieces, both in reporting to the board and reporting out to the public. Will also help with our internal work plans and those types of documents potentially. And in future could also be used to actually help to develop the actual strategic plan document as well. So there's still some work in that space to move forward. And then today we're looking to the board to. Move this strategic plan, if they're not, provide further direction, if you will. And then we also have, if we want to go to the next slide, please, Avat. A plan on a page, which is just capturing again that purpose, vision, mission and value statements. Reminds us of this why, what, how and do. And the strategic priority areas. And the idea with this document is that we would have this available. Easily accessible as a one-page sort of reference guide to the board in the boardroom and internally that we can use as a reference. Next slide, please, Avat. That's it for the presentation. Happy to answer any questions, take feedback, come back again.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And I have to compliment. The proposed modification for the purpose, vision and mission value statements. In particular. Partners in all levels of government. We've seen that in action and it's really good to see. You know, our E O C team working with provincial government. On the residents' path, constituents' path. So I think that fits perfect in this. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, go ahead, Director French.
Thanks, Chair. And out of the gate apologies, I've not been a part of this process. So I'm looking at this brand new with fresh eyes and my experience with strategic plans. Indicates that there are usually timelines attached and I don't, I don't see any time goals. I don't see any deadlines. There's nothing really about timing. So I wonder if you might touch a bit on. What's with the lack of any timeline and is in the future, there a conversation around?
Sure. So with regards to timelines, are you referring to timelines for specific work or for the strat plan? Evolution and delivery or?
I, I think both.
So Heather, sorry, through the chair, the C O may want to elaborate on this a bit. This, again, we've been looking at this as, as I said, a strat plan light. Because, well, I also noted that we haven't dug into the goals and objectives either, which would sometimes be included in a, in a strategic plan. Sorry.
Your C O call, yeah.
Yes, Chair, it's a good question and I have the same things in my mind. This has been a really quick push. Just prior to be hitting my two months. Really decided to get this on the, on the table, realizing that it has been stalled since July. And seeing in the first two board meetings that a guiding document for decision making. And the strategic versus the tactical was required. This will also help me review the current work plans that staff have. And apply timelines that are realistic, but I, I really can't make promises not understanding capacity in current work. The next steps after this is to look at the fuel, hopefully in April, which is a list of all outstanding resolutions. And have the board review it with the lens of this plan on the page. The idea being that one page is, is almost like a placemat. In our board meetings, so we, are we making decisions in our vision or are we starting something new? And that, that's, that's the plan. So it is really a strat plan light, because I would normally want much more time on something like this. However, I feel the need to have something in front of us is more important than that detail.
Thank you.
Good sense, Director Pedigame, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of things. And first, I just want to say. You know, I, I assume it must have been challenging to go into the year expecting to be doing some work and then. Not being able to focus on that, but I wanted to thank you for the very high pressure and critical E O C work. It was so important. So thank you very much for shifting that way. A couple of thoughts I had just reading this, comparing the current. And I really want to be careful not to get into wordsmithing and so on, but comparing the current versus proposed vision. In the current one, that cooperation cohesive, to me really communicates what I believe is, you know, we are diverse and have differences, but. Through the R G S and even though there's different O C Ps with, you know, differences in them. I do feel like this group really does have a shared vision and we're, feels like we're all pulling in the same way despite some of those differences. And in the newer vision, that's missing for me a little bit. It makes me feel like, no, we're. Sort of somewhat going in different directions maybe, or quite possibly. We come and we collaborate well together, but we're not necessarily on the same path. And I wonder. You know, if, if we actually have a shared feeling of, yes, that is our. You know, like to me, the point of the R G S is we're all pulling in the same direction. I wonder if a clear articulation of that is important. And other folks may have a different position in terms of, no, we really need that independence to go in our different areas and municipalities. The other thing, and it's a smaller one, and it was sort of existing, so maybe we just don't fiddle with it. Common sense always, it's a bit itchy for me because, you know, it's common sense. Are we talking about? And, you know, I get the sort of sentiment of like, maybe certain things are, we think of as self-evident and so on, but. You know, a bit skeptical of that concept. So just a comment there. I don't know if anyone else is bothered that. And then the last one, I, you know. I'm fairly focused on the climate. It's come up in our discussions and it's just a question for me, even our strategic planning. At some times, it, it seemed like it was really important to the group and then other times it was sort of. One of many things. And this sort of, as this plan, it's, it doesn't raise to the top of like. It's sort of in there and sustainability, but it's not clear. And so I'm actually not sure. Myself as a board, where we are on that. And so, yeah, it's maybe a question to the group.
Thank you, Director Pumpkin.
It's interesting point about climate. I, I, there's a lot that's probably. In the top five priorities that aren't listed as part of your mission or vision. You don't itemize. Rural road infrastructure, whatever the major priority is. And so I'm, 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 I'm. I personally remain committed, I think more in this area. Oh, not in mission, vision, strategy. Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, the strategic priorities. That would make sense to me.
For clarity, because it's a bit of a side conversation, but I wasn't suggesting climate in the mission, vision. It's in the strategic priorities. There's sustainability. But, you know, climate isn't even mentioned there. And so that's, I'm wondering if somewhere in that area, if as a board, we think. It rises to that level or not. I'm not sure.
I think it does.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's interesting, the, I'll just, we'll try to compartmentalize this to the, the climate, the climate question. And I think. I see it in community well-being and livability. I see it in sustainability. You know, however, I also see an emergency planning in so much as the effects of. Climate change that we're feeling. So I do think that. I don't know if it's a re-packaging of what's there and like finding a way to get that into a title. And I know that it's woven into all the work that we do. But I, I do think that it needs, we'd be well-served with it being more specifically highlighted somewhere, whether it's an overarching. Piece that's not necessarily a priority area because it's so embedded in all those pieces or, or like, there's a few ways we can capture things like that that are foundational. And I think that truth, that when I think about those foundational pieces, I think about. Truth and reconciliation. I think about climate and. So many things flow from, flow from there, you know, like those are just foundational to the pieces that we're doing and how we intend to do our work. And in my. Opinion and my approach to this work, and I'd like to see that reflect. I think we can do a better job of reflecting that here, because I do think that we're. When we run up against the edge of those, of those topics, the boards are very supportive of. Of initiatives in those broad, you know, for those broad reasons. So. Putting that here somewhere is, I think it's, it's. And I think R G S does a good job of speaking to that too. So there's likely somewhere to pull this from, but. I, I do think it deserves more than it, than I'm seeing on the, on the page. And if we're trying to get to that place. The, the plan on the page, the placemat piece, then it certainly needs to be on that piece somewhere.
I agree. And I recall the workshop that we had a few years ago in that community center with. Climate change and indigenous relationships being like the two overarching, you know, the umbrella that everything else would be considered under. I was pretty comfortable with that and it seemed to have a bit more of a. Bit more power to it than, than you see in this plan. And I like this plan. I like this work. C O calls.
Thank you, through the chair. I agree. I personally. Don't believe truth and reconciliation in its own compartment. I believe that it is in every single one of these subjects. I also believe that climate action is in every single one of these subjects. I would, I, I would suggest. Perhaps that it's sustainability and climate action or climate action and sustainability as the, as the head to bring that forwards. I do like the idea of having an overarching. And it could be argued always, community well-being is in our advocacy, is in our responsive governance. And that's the tricky part. Is, is in some way having, having a way of saying, these are not compartments. These are all overarching themes that we do every day. And we touch upon. So one of my suggestions might be that if for now. Sustainable, climate action and sustainability is, is the title. And I don't want to get into problem solving, but I do see, I do see it, and I see it as a bit of a journey that we're going to go on. I would say I, the vision for me is something this was created prior to me. And I would like to see in the next two years, the learning that we're going to do, the. Advocacy for climate action, the advocacy, the learning for under it, truth and reconciliation that we're going to do. We're going to see likely changes in our vision. Understanding that when we say we're stewards of the region, what impact are we having on the original stewards of the. Public community, of the land that we're on. And I didn't want to insert that into this process. And have it an evolution of the learning journey that we just learned from Jeanette that will all be on in the next two years. However, I think with climate action, you are right. It's been, it's been discussed and committed to and that the, we're far more advanced on that. Portfolio to see it aligned with every single one of these subjects.
Thank you. Other comments for Ms. Western?
So I thank you for the, for the reply. And I, I think that might just be the easiest. You know, that is the best way to, the easiest and best, which doesn't always happen. Those things simultaneously. So I'm happy with, with that. I did want to pick up on the common sense piece. And I think, I do think that one's, that one's challenging and, and I mean, some of the things we look at are subjective, but. I would appreciate if we're going, if we're evolving those pieces, if there's another way to convey. What we're trying to convey there. I think we'd be well-served with exploring that or having some options come back to us or. Some way of addressing that, because that one is a bit, is a bit challenging and, and. Yeah, I don't quite know what to do with that piece.
Practical?
Practical. Yeah, like there's all these things, because I mean, physically, like within reason, does it mean, does it mean a simple solution versus that? Sense to someone, but then when you apply our technicals, it doesn't become sense as you do this to get that. I don't know.
Okay, Director DeMares.
Just on the, like comment on the sense piece. Back a number of years ago, I was working in the Northwest Forest Safety Center in Orlando. One of the sessions was on debunking common sense. And it was very insightful. They went through a whole bunch of scenarios for people who got hurt. The persons weren't trained. They didn't know. And, you know, it's common sense that he shouldn't know. It's common sense that he shouldn't know. And it went over and over again. You either know or you don't know. And part of that is training and having data and everything else that goes along with it. So, yes, it.
Questions for staff?
Well, I, I think I have a, the question is with, with the feedback on the common sense piece, like is staff looking, the staff have the direction that they need to. Address, to address that in, in some way or like. We've got, we've had one title change. I guess the question is likely for both the pieces where I feel we've had movement. Is adding the climate change and the sustainability category, some, somehow that makes sense in that title, which I think is pretty easy. And then there's this common sense piece. And how do we want to approach that? So I just thought. I think that we spoke about, so I'll make sure we have the, get the right direction. What, what would be the next step if we wanted to address those two things? Does the recommendation is to?
I would defer to the C O for direction on that.
Director, I. I would be happy to work with common sense out of the values. And off the top of my head, I couldn't come up, part of me is saying, using the best available information. But at, at this time, we can, we can do that. Firmly believe common sense is, can be used in, even people who don't agree with each other. And it's very colonial that what is common to us might not be common to others. So I, I, I think removing it or replacing it, I would be wary to replace it with another, they would need to say. Something more inspiring.
I could just, I, I think when I look at the, the recommendation and next steps, I don't think that either of those changes really. Change the overall intent of the, of the document, but I think it's important that we do them and I'm happy to. Figure out a way, hopefully with the group, that we can move this forwards. With those changes incorporated, because the next steps are about sort of blow from, blow from this. I don't think it's worth. Like, I don't feel that, I personally don't feel that strongly about it, that. We delay this whole thing until we see the word. I'm happy to give that, I'm happy to give that, that general direction. Reading it over my shoulder because mine was asleep about the, the. Common sense and best available information, like, I like removing, removing it and.
Just get rid of it, yeah. Just get rid of it, yeah.
That information data, like, I don't know, there's, there might be an improvement, just that last piece. I'm trying to you're hearing me thinking out loud, which happens often as far as how that relates to the right to the the motions we have in front of us, so, um.
Could we really just delete both common sense and and just say using the best available information?
My mic's intuition.
Maybe, maybe I could say, i- if we're talking about those those two pieces, I'm gonna take, see if I can get this over the line. Is the first in the, um, the Squamishloa Regional District Board approved the strategic plan uh, and plan on a page, uh, with a new purpose, rise, mission, and vision statements. Instead of as presented, say incorporating, uh, feedback in the meeting, which I think we, the group, I only heard feedback on those two pieces. So if that's specific enough, then, um, then the others flow from from there.
All right.
So that way I don't have to wordsmith the potential wordsmithing. That makes sense, so that'll be my my motion incorporating feedback, uh, of the board in the meeting today.
Give motion, I'll second it.
Excellent, okay, so.
And I won't even take it off, can't just speak to it, because I think I just did that.
Thank you, Director Herbert, okay, so that's moved consecutive, we're just talking about the first that or all three of them?
My intent was all together.
All right, all three that's. And Director Pennyfield?
Yeah, happy to support this, um, I appreciate the the changes to the the resolution, I, just for my own piece or water reiterating, I know, noticed that, you know, no one picked up the first thing I mentioned. I guess I'm a little unclear, because my sense of this room is we are all really pulling in the same direction, and so I have great comfort with the group, we're there, not sure if the document says that, which is like, oh, are are we really, or is there some, this is something we just don't want to talk about today? Um, and so maybe this is something then to just dig into, you know, with some of our upcoming work. Or just, you know, and it's maybe just my lack of clarity, because again, I feel like we're all actually really working well together in the same direction, but no. We can have that discussion then.
Just for clarity, like, is, sorry, is there a word or is there a sentence that in particular that you're speaking to?
Yeah, it's just the, in the first vision, it says cooperation and cohesive, and cohesive in particular to me sort of implies same direction. The other one talks about collaborate and engage, and then diverse distinct, which has more implication of, no, there's more like not going the same way, working well together, but not maybe in the same direction necessarily. And so it's just not entirely clear to me philosophically where we are, again, my experience is that we are all going in the same direction with differences, but like, it's it's hard to even articulate, uh, but yeah, just sort of wanting to, you know. Uh, have that discussion at some point, maybe.
Yes, just for a point of clarification, if I if I'm hearing correctly, I think what we're talking about is potentially a bit of a combination of that current vision and then maybe a little bit from the proposed, um. The second statement in the new proposed vision is pulled directly from the R G S that our vision for the region is one of, one comprised of diverse, um, so if word, uh, preferred, we could remove that again, um, from, we could take that out again from the sufficient statement, um, I think, um. Further to Director Damaris' earlier comment, we did really want to capture that all levels of government, um, in this piece. So could it potentially be, um, something that's a combination of the first of the two, so maybe, um, the Squamishloa Regional District will lead regional governments. That's, yeah, um.
Just not in that vision statement, where it says regional governance by promoting collaboration and cohesive engagement among amongst its members. Just add the cohesive in, that's all it really needs.
And C A O?
I might also suggest asking ourselves, why was collaboration and engagement put in place of cooperation and cohesion? And do we just put it back? I I I wasn't in the strategic planning session, so I don't know.
Yeah, uh, collaboration and engagement were two words that came out a lot, um, in that process that were highlighted, um, repeatedly. So that's why they were.
So I appreciate the discussion, I actually appreciate, uh, Director Damaris' suggestion, uh, the C A O's suggestion. I am happy with the motion presented, and we could sort of take this last piece in in the follow-up, uh. Wanted to just at least highlight it, so if other people want this changed now, then, but I will support the resolution that's on the floor now as well, so.
Director Crapton?
Um, thank you, Chair, looking at the strategic priority areas. My recollection of our strategic planning was that we came out with governance excellence, like we had like three or four priority areas that we had agreed to, and now I see six and governance excellence isn't one, I'm wondering if i- if I have just missed this step. And so how did, did did we not have like three things that we came up with, and now we have six, was there a process to get from here to there, or is this what came out of the conversation with Mr. McIntosh? Like, didn't we adopt a report back from the strategic planning process?
I believe the report, um, numerous reports that were developed came before the strategic planning, um. So I think it was last February, March, um, when the former C A O presented the package of documents that became the, um, corporate action plan, um, our our quarterly reports to the public, um, and so there were some priority areas identified in there that came out of, um. Uh, I believe they were existing work plans and the the work that was sort of already, um. Underway.
And so these are new.
So and this, these, um, six pillars of our priority areas came out of those the later sessions that we did, um, where, um, we didn't actually get to the point of really focusing in on those. But when we went back and looked at all of the, um, many, many, many things that were kind of invited. Um, we themed them under these six sort of categories. So that's where that governance excellence, um, service capacity alignment, performance management, so those were already referenced on that. Um, the one-page action plan that, um, the former C A O had developed. Um, and then we've captured those under that category of responsible governance and service.
I I guess I'm comfortable, I I I feel like we we were pretty thorough in that process, and we like adopted reports, and we did a lot of made a lot of progress that was that took a lot of like time and energy and meetings and all kinds of other stuff. And we're going to adopt this now, which as I look at it and hear the thoughts on it, it 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 resonates for me, but I would love to see this beside the outcomes of the meetings we had with Mr. McIntosh, the all of the work product of all of the stuff that we did to get here. Just because I think that those like strategic planning retreats and 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 that kind of work is really important, because it says, are we all on the same page? We are, remember, we threw out, we took stickies and put them all over walls, and it was a very comprehensive process.
I and I I'm coming in a little late on the game, um, and I when you say that some of the documents and stuff, the the templates that have been created for the corporate action plan and the work plans, um, tho- that's referenced. And I I, just from my personal experience, usually the strategic plan is first and adopted, and then it flows down, what's, okay, how the how and the do, it feels like it kind of went a bit opposite, and we started with creating the work plans and creating the corporate action plans, and those are referenced in one of the slides in the circular visual of the slides where we have those. And now it's the strategic plan that that was pretty much developed under that vision, but needed to be put in a plan, but the direction was, we need one page that shows what our strategic plan is, reminding us of our vision, reminding us of our purpose. And what our pillars are, but we'll say pillars, not categories, what our pillars are. And so I think we're, my, I think I share your confusion, because where my confusion was, was that those documents were created prior to the adoption of a strategic plan. So the the all of that work what fed into those documents, and now we're kind of going into the middle here and saying, okay, and also this is a strategic plan. But I don't believe the documents contradict the strategic plan.
Just don't know, like, I think you're right, that was the process that Gord decided to take, was to talk about actual action items that wanted accomplished, but the final outcome from what I remember was a strategic, here are our three priority areas, we're gonna do this big thing, this big thing, and this big thing, and there's all kinds of stuff that flows out of it, and so if we didn't have strategic priority areas in this document, the document would make a lot of sense to me. The fact that we do, and I'm wondering, well, what were the strategic priorities that area that we are replacing? Or or actually just, um, renewing a commitment to, because that's a good point, people point to the upper right corner. Yes, governance excellence is there, and that reflects what I remember. Um, I I guess I'm hung up on, I thought we had three priority areas, and now we have six. And it feels like we've done that very, very quickly without the same kind of rigor that we went through previously.
Ms. Westerlin, and then Jen and Chris, and yeah, and through the C A O, um, and looking at that twenty twenty-three action plan, which was that one-page document that, um, the former C A O had developed after that December session, um, we had listed, um, priorities as regional, um. A a government governance excellence initiative, regional transit, indigenous indigenous relations plan, affordable housing, service capacity alignment. So all of those things do fall under these pillars, so the pillars are really, um, and it may be that the board wishes to you know, one year you might choose to focus on one pillar, maybe all of the work in one year is going to be around advocacy. Maybe you will direct that one year it will all be around climate action. Um, but this was a way to capture all of those, um, items that came out of those, um, numerous strategic planning workshops that were highlighted, um, by the board as areas to of priority, so instead we could have had, um, you know, we could have went individually and had eighty-eight um, priority areas, to throw a number out there, but this was a good way to, um, be able to group them together by themes um, as they appeared throughout that process, yeah, that helps, but again, further to, um, C A O Paul's comment. I don't believe any of this contradicts that, um, one-page strategic priority document.
Sorry, I could pull it up.
Good reference back to what you
I can see what you're seeing.
So it is a link within the report, so.
Oh, I tried to find, where is it?
Yeah, so it is like the twenty twenty-three action plan. And if I go to the report that Patricia provided us um, under October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, there was a board meeting where the board received an information report regarding the Q three performance, and I believe there's one attachment um, that shows that one pager that the past C A O had presented to the board outlining the information, um. That the consultant, or McIntosh, had sort of all pulled together, so the the now regional board priorities. Number one being governance excellence initiative, number two, regional transit. Three, indigenous relations plan, four, affordable housing, and five, service capacity alignment. And that was in the top box, and then there were timelines associated with all of those.
I through the through the chair, I wish I wish we could pull it up so I could, I could show you. Uh, but if we look at it, the gray areas are board priorities, and you see the now the next and the advocacy. So there are, I feel like all of this is reflected in the strategic plan. Um, unless there's something else you're visualizing that might have been from Mr. McIntosh's report.
No, this this makes sense to me, um. Like, as I read it, lo- lo- what really got me excited through that whole process was this board's commitment to one and five. The other stuff felt like advocacy. You know, we're, uh, maybe not indigenous relations, but certainly affordable housing and regional transit, like, these are things that we're gonna advocate for and work towards. But it felt like we had a moment through that process where we all said, aha. We need to focus on ensuring that we're effective around this table and that we're honest about the capacity that we have, and that that would be a major step ahead for our organization. And if we focused on, you know, lying at a strategic level at this table and being realistic and honest about our capacity to deliver on all the things that we're doing. We would take massive steps ahead, and those should be our strategic priorities. And that felt really strong at the time, and I still find it compelling. Because we still have way more that we want to do than we have capacity for, and we still have a tendency to get tactical. And so, um. I just don't want that lost, I guess, and so for me, I feel like the report lays it out well. And the strategic priorities for me, um, I I would be happy for two or three, maybe a third that would be advocacy, and and one would be capacity alignment, the other would be, um. Governance excellence, a- and the third being advocacy. But to Chris's point, the last thing I want to do is like hang up this whole process, so if we all agree that we're going down that path anyway, and that those six things reflect the big ahas we had at the beginning of this term. I think I'm I'm comfortable.
The C A O, could I suggest that, um, the third that is, um, that staff report back to the board at a future meeting with updated performance reports, including that, um, action plan for twenty twenty-four? Could I suggest that the this twenty, the twenty, this action plan, updated for twenty twenty-four, becomes the second page of that plan on page? So it's two plans on page, um, so the plan on the page is the really high-level, here's our vision, mission, values. This is the hierarchy of plans, these are the pillars, and then the second page of that becomes the twenty twenty-four action plan. That is a little bit more focused.
Well, I don't want to like, my 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 preference would be to just confirm what you've done here, because you've, this is very strategic for us, and almost affirm it as long as there's a lot of clarity that one and five are gonna be you know, to to me, that was the big pieces of this, one and five were like the things that we didn't realize about ourselves before the beginning of this term, and then we realized it about ourselves, and we decided And then we realized it about ourselves and we decided we needed to do something about it. And so if you can reflect that in the strategic priority, I'd be comfortable with it. It seems to me that yes, you can make a case for it being. Already there. Just don't want to miss it or lose it. Especially the capacity alignment, like we have so much.
Okay, so thank you. And that might be. It may be adequate to just with the addition of saying incorporating the feedback at the meeting. But there's still Director Penningell and Herford wanting to speak yet and Director DeMings.
Yeah, my, my recollection and I always get caught up in semantics in these strategic planning discussions. I think most people do. Um, probably me especially, but from my mind. You know, we, we had to work with. Mr. McIntosh, I, I seem to recall further for discussions and follow-up. For me, the document we're talking about today and notwithstanding some of the things I raised. This is a really good summary of why, why we're here. And, you know, it reflects my expectation that staff was taking all those discussions and synthesizing that. And then what I see in the action plan, which we absolutely endorsed and talked about, is some of, it's a little more tactical. It's the, the what, the how. And, and naturally falls under the strategic planning document we're talking today. And, and so. We're not aiming to address everything in, in what we might approve today. Here, here's the focus on tactically in terms of actual work plan. These are the, where their practical focus is going to be as an organization. To achieve the higher why over time, I'm seeing the. And that's just how I think about these documents and their purpose and maybe that's not shared. So. For me, what we have here, it all makes sense. It, it fits together. And it's not one or the other. They're, they both go together in my mind.
Yeah, that's some, pretty similar to what I, where I was gonna go. I like Patricia's idea of. Of the two page, one pager having on the other side. I think it's something people want to see. John led with that, you know, seeing what actions and timelines come out of a strategic plan as opposed to just being. The fluffy document on the shelf. So I, I think it, it creates a good balance. I think they go hand in hand. I think they, they fit all together as Chris said, um. Uh, and I agree with a lot of. Director Crompton's comments, uh, but I think those other three items need to be in there as well. I think one and five are very important. As, as, as uh, work done. But I think those other priorities are priorities that were established by the boards who are, who are sessions. You know, we get a letter back tomorrow from the provincial government. A positive letter with regards to regional transit, there's gonna, that's gonna be a priority that's gonna require work from our staff and from the board. So I think it needs to be up there as one of those priorities. Similar with, with number three and number four, affordable housing is something we talk about every ten minutes. So I think that needs to be up there. So I, I agree with your comments, Jack. I, I, I see why that's important to you. I would be, I would be a little reluctant to remove any of those other items on there though and just go with the two. I think if we go back to back on the document. It spells it out all pretty clearly. It does, you know, looking at this does take me back to Chris's original comment, but no, there's nothing mentioned about climate one to five. But uh. Other than that, I like the idea of bringing them together.
Okay. Okay, climate has been incorporated as a stronger statement, Director DeMings and Director Crompton.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of moving this forward with a few amendments that we have. But one of the keys is that, is that. Is, is, is the work plan and, and being able to. Link each activity that's in there to one of these. Strategic priorities that we have here. So that when the public sees it, when it's presented to the, to the board, of course, the public can see it. And having a column that has, and we've mentioned this before. That actually links each task. To one of these priorities that we have here. So we understand. So that the community can understand what we're working on, why we're working on these various tasks. And I think with the new. Program that we've got. It'll have that capability to do that. And uh. That's to me, one of the most important. That was number ten for me. Of all the things that we did at that workshop. Was getting that program initiated and working. And hopefully it'll be done by the end of the year, I presume. Because that's a key for uh, for staff to really. Develop that program to most capacity they use.
Director, um, implementation is scheduled for fall. Um, I'm reluctant to say summer because.
Director Crompton.
This went exactly the opposite direction I'd hoped it would. The last thing I want to do is continue to micromanage an action plan. Like I, the, the whole goal for me was to say. We need this to be a strategic plan that gives high-level direction and what we're gonna do is add a back piece that allows us to go. And, and so. My preference is to go with the original. Seriously, I, this is not what I was saying, so.
Thank you. I'm quite happy with putting on a page and I think I have. Uh, Director Hop fully up in there.
I don't know if you can back up on that, but. So the way I, I felt that I, when we were doing all these uh, strategic planning. Is one and five governance excellence and service capacity. That all the decisions that we made at this table, that was kind of woven into the fabric of our decision-making. So governance excellence into regional transit and indigenous relations and that's how I saw it. So maybe I. I saw it a little bit differently, but I think that everything that. We have as our priorities, no matter what they are, should be led with, first of all. You know, governance excellence and service capacity for staffing and, and that, so I don't know.
Director Herford.
Yeah, thank you. Just um. Maybe this goes to that governance excellence piece. When I made the motion. Generally, directors' comments on motions are not. The motion that was captured. So I want to make sure we know what it is we're voting on now, because to me, the conversation has wandered.
Yes.
And I appreciate that and maybe the motion was too, too early. But when I said incorporating the feedback that we heard. I picked two spots. And that was seconded. So that was where I feel we are. And if we're somewhere else, then we need to go back in the motion to reflect that. Because I think we went a little bit further than I'm comfortable with in a debate on emotion. Because we were providing feedback, including quite a lot of, of staff, which was appropriate to answer the, the pieces of clarity, but. I want to make sure we know what we're voting on. That's all I'm, I'm saying it that, for this piece of it. So. But speaking of emotion, which I said I wouldn't do earlier, uh, I think that um. Given that we've been. All efforts have been made to advance this and keep the organization moving. Throughout this pro, this process, I get that the strategic plan is generally first and. However, we need to put this strategic plan. In so that the rest of the process can start aligning with that. And I get that we start from the wrong place, I'm from a slightly out of order, but that doesn't mean that. That um, to me, that means that over time, we need to adjust that and work plans are gonna start reflecting. The strategic plan, even though they're speaking to each other backwards now and that'll start aligning. I see that aligning, needing to align over time. Just by the nature of what those documents are set to, to um, to do. So I'm comfortable with. What was there, my original intent. And then. There was the piece, uh, although I will modify it, if, uh, I'd like to amend my motion to include the piece around the. The um, that was a cooperation or sorry, your, um, I like that. Cohesive with some language around cohesiveness. That's the three pieces that, that adds that third piece, if that's a friendly. My secondary, I'm okay with that.
And so Angela, yeah.
Um, through the chairs, um, I think that the original motion captures that as, because we do have incorporating feedback received from the board. So.
Yeah, just when, when it gets to the debate to like, it's like up to that point, because often when we go, I've seen, and I didn't really feel it. necessarily here, but I've been in other rooms where the comments are meant to be the directions. Well, I don't necessarily feel that. So then now it turns into this whole thing. So like up to that. Point in time was my, was my intent, so that comments are on. That feedback that's provided up to that, up to that point. But yes, I did leave it very general, didn't I? So I left it open for those comments, but.
Yeah, so the motions are, as you see in your package, with, with the addition, the director Herford changed on the first bat. It's no longer as presented, but rather. The revised vision initiative, so incorporating the feedback. At the meeting from the directors.
Which I meant to say before, I mean, like.
Yes.
That was provided.
And so that has been moved and seconded. And it does cover the conversation that came afterwards.
I think that's the problem.
That's the problem. That's, that's my point.
Is it covers too much of the conversation. I think Director Herford is trying to say, when he made the motion, it was about two, now three pieces.
Okay.
We continue to talk at length.
Alright.
We got this other slide up, oh, basically, this had nothing to do with my original motion. So I, I, and I don't know how. What that motion would look like, so what I'm.
The three points being um, to work on common sense. And the climate adaptation.
Climate action.
To be strengthened.
And then the cohesive, something that can be said cohesiveness of the. Of, of there. Those were the three, those are the three points. That I had in.
Intended to be included in incorporating feedback and that. Is that understood, um, Miss Westerholm, those, those three areas? And so. With that understanding, are we happy with the promotion notes as general as it is? Okay. In that case, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, is anyone opposed? And I don't see the screen anymore, so I don't actually call up. You have a hand up, Paula? Did you want to?
No, I'm just, I'm still here. I don't oppose.
You don't oppose? Okay, then that's unanimously passed. Thank you.
I, I really have to ask, Patricia, did we just, are you leaving more confused than you walked in?
Very generous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My friends are gonna love that.
That should be our whole, that should be the strategic plan.
Here, we have a couple more items right now, we have the whole agenda. Direct reports, I don't believe we have any. No, I do not have anything. Do not have, this is not late business here, although we will have something when we get back to the regular agenda. No, that wasn't. So a motion to adjourn committee of the whole. If anyone opposed, you, as we have the whole, thank you. The next item. That we go back into our regular meeting, grant item eight point eight. Which is application to the U B C M disaster risk reduction with climate adaptation. That we'll wait for Mark.
Eight point eight, Sarah?
Eight point eight, yeah. And then we have nine point two, nine point three. Welcome, Mr. Billups and Mr. Butt. We're on item eight point eight. On the U B C M disaster risk reduction and climate adaptation fund, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Perfect. Excuse me. Uh, thank you, Chair, and I thank you, Board, for your time. Um, this uh, R F D is related to an application to the U B C M disaster risk reduction climate adaptation fund. Uh, so in collaboration with the S L R D Environmental Services and with the Pemberton Valley Dyking District. Uh, the S L R D uh, Protective Services Department wishes to submit an application. In two categories for two separate projects uh, to the disaster risk reduction climate adaptation fund. Uh, so first project uh, is uh, related to a regional disaster debris management plan. Category one foundational activity. Uh, the purpose of this project is to develop a business continuity plan for the loss of S L R, S L R D debris-related infrastructure. And plan for large-scale disaster de- debris disposal. I think the, the events of last summer, um. Although kind of a bit smaller in terms of the actual amount of debris we had, really highlighted the need for us to have a, a solid plan about how we will deal with it potentially in the future. Uh, so this project will support the development of a regional disaster debris management plan. That and will support the coordination of efforts and resources between local and regional partners. So this uh, project not only will help uh, ensure that the facilities that the S L R D operates have continuity plans and emergency magic plans associated with those facilities. But it will be working with uh, the member municipalities to ensure that we are able to, if there is a loss of one facility, that we have plans in place to. Uh, kind of adapt and adjust how we manage disaster debris. Uh, this, so this project will be led by the Environmental Services Department and the Protective Services Department will uh, support it. Uh, the second project, uh, which this application includes is a category two. It's a non-structural activity uh, project. Uh, so this uh, project proposes uh, to improve the monitoring capability of Mount Meager. Uh, in partnership with local and indigenous uh, government side of trade university and interjects. Uh, with this funding, uh, the Pemberton Valley Dyking District uh, will be able to add more infrasound and seismic equipment. Uh, on Mount Meager as well as a broadener communication network to expand uh, modern capabilities. Uh, so this will allow for remote triggering uh, of a signal to alert the P V D D that an adventure has occurred on Mount Meager. And will also aptitude, uh, provide an aptitude in a rough area of occurrence. Uh, so uh, this is, this project again is, it's important for uh, the S L R D, uh, Lula Nation and uh, the village of Pemberton. Uh, so if successful, the P V D D will oversee this project and again, yeah, Protective Services Department will support them that in doing so. Happy to take any questions.
Motion for staff and Director Herford.
Yeah, thank you. Both, both of these projects sound um, very important and, and supportable. Uh, I'm curious though in. We have a, you know, the. This regional district is so massive. How does, I'd just like to understand how staff prioritize. Like, how do these rise to the. To the top and of what's likely a endless list of, of challenges and, and hazards and, and so on. So. Yeah, just if you could help me understand the, the prioritization and um, it'd be helpful.
Yeah, so, um, I will hand it over to Omar in a second. But in terms of the regional disaster pre-management uh, project, I think. Again, it was highlighted this summer and I learned a lot more about the challenges associated with debris than I ever thought I would. Uh, it is complicated. Uh, there's many regulations and considerations and partners that are involved in doing so. Uh, I understand that in the past that there was fifty thousand dollars uh, kind of uh, put aside to support the Environmental Services Department in doing this, as it was recognized as a need. Previously. Uh, and obviously this grant funding uh, allows us to kind of push it uh, further and allows us to actually bring on uh, some contractors to help us do this work. Uh, maybe overall.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's something that's been on our plan for a few years and it kind of, with all the stuff that comes up, it, it kind of keeps getting pushed. Yeah, it's, it's, it's something that's been on our plan for a few years and it kind of, with all the stuff that comes up, it, it kind of keeps getting pushed. And this would really help, uh. Think like Mike, uh, Mark said, the wildfire situation last year really highlighted the need for that continuity plan. So if we do get this grant funding, it would really help us make sure we, we get that done. And there's a two-year timeline for that, so. Yeah, it would, it would help, help bring it to the top and, and sure we get it.
I'd say in terms of the uh, Mount Meagering, Meager, Meager monitoring uh, project. Uh, that uh, yeah, obviously we have our experts in the Pemberton Valley Dyking. Who know uh, very well the hazards, but I think as we all know, that Mount Meager is a, a concern. Uh, for us and uh, and for the entire region. And I think uh, this uh, and the partnerships through S F U and interjects. Uh, really will help us push it forward. So I think, and a lot of the, the work is on the Pemberton Valley Dyking District to um, move this project for us.
Um, I'd like to move both of these.
Second.
Second by Director Crumpton, thank you. Is there anyone opposed? That motion is carried. That's our approval. Thank you. Order three. Do the third one as because it's different voting structure. They would even give the last resolution separately. So I need a motion to. Seconded by Director Mack. Anyone in opposition seeing now that motion is also approved. Thank you very much. We are jumping now to nine point two. Virtual information session for the Downton Lake wildfire property lawsuit. The Director DeMare back at the table.
Yes, um. I'll, I'll just read. The resolution that the S L R D board and directors support the S L R D staff plan and execute. Down Lake Wildfire Virtual Information Session. This session is to update the property lawsuit of what the recovery team is still working on. And an update dated sequence of permit studies and reports. That they have been, they have to undertake to get their properties back to self-form that they can be used. This would also include anything related to internal health regulations on their rebuild. And that, that session has a time at the end for question and answer. One of the things that. Happened during that wildfire. Was there was no staff. Present up in our area. And, and uh. Basically, there were no, no meetings. That were held with, with the public. And, and we had a few. You know, we had continual updates from, from the S L R D on uh. Social media and, and other processes. But the fifty-six people that lost their properties have never actually had a session with staff. Talk about all the issues that they're going through and everything that, that has transpired. They did have a session with. The property laws group. There's a, a committee for it. And uh, they did have a session with them. Uh, virtually. But the rest of the property owners uh, that lost property really. Haven't been fully engaged with the staff. And. It's time right now, if, if you were to go up there, your last visit. You'd be amazed at what's taken place there. Pretty well, all those properties have all their trees taken down. Most of them got removed now. And uh, it's a whole new world. And these people are both ready to start moving forward. And this is the time right now that we need to have this. This information session where they can ask questions. Well, it's just those property loss group people. That's all it's for. It's not for the whole of Gunway. So that they get the information. So, yeah, I need, I would like the board to uh. To prove it. So I'll make that motion as presented.
Seconded by um, Director Mack. Yes, Director Crumpton.
Through the chair, why is a resolution like this required? The, the, the resolution is to support work that is ongoing.
The reason is, is they, they, they've never been able to ask questions face to face. And one of the, one of the things that happens when you have a session like that is when the questions, first of all, they give that presentation. And then you're able to ask questions. And everybody gets to hear those questions. So everybody's learning at the same time. Of, you know, what, what is actually going on. Having something on uh, a newsletter or whatever is not the same.
Sorry. The, the motion says support staff's plan. So is it staff's intention to do this meeting?
That staff, S L R D staff plan and execute the virtual session. So I'm asking the board. To support this resolution that staff. Plan and execute on a virtual information session.
I see.
And so if we're asking staff to do something, then we should ask the C A O to address the question of capacity. Yeah.
Thank you. Through the chair. I fully respect the need and the. The spirit of Director DeMare's. Request. My concern with a motion like this is that. This is the due. And my feeling is it needs to be addressed in the quarterly reviews and performance reviews of the C A O. Um, I would like to invite Mark to talk about the communications and the work being done and planned. I would say the first issue here is capacity. If I was going to build an ideal communication in, in community engagement department, would have a lot more staff. And talking to other regional districts when this came up, I made some phone calls down to the regional districts and what they do. And, and it really is a big, it's a big pendulum. Of less than what we do and more than what we do. Um, some regional districts host monthly. Virtual meetings for their areas. What with staff, but they have a significant, not more staff capacity. Um, so my, my preference would be that. Our goal is to communicate and engage. That's part of our, that's part of our. Work plan, that's part of our strategy. And how we're delivering it is reduced to the C A O's performance. You're not engaging enough with the community. You're not allowing the questions. We need to address this. How do we do it? What roadblocks are in your way? And what can we do to make it better for the community? Cause I agree. There's multiple ways to communicate and we, because of capacity have used the. Inroads of digital and also regionally geographically, this is a difficult place to. Give it to constantly being out there. And then for safety during the fire, that was that question, as I understand it. Um, I'm wondering if I could invite. Mr. Phillips to talk a minute about that a little bit from some background and then we could go on. Have some questions about.
If I could, just a quick point. Or this is a example, like in our earlier discussion, we uh, moved and seconded and then we're having. Uh, so I, I think if we, I think to support a vote. We should just then procedurally, I'd like to, I'd prefer officer to keep us on the side, but I, I, in my experience, I, I feel more comfortable if the. Motion was um, um, stepped back at this point and then we can have a bigger conversation. I don't think we're ready to have a vote. And now we're having more information than just a debate about the director, the director, the directors. So I don't think we're at vote. Point. So I'd like that to come back and then. And then we can get to that, that vote. That feels like what's. That feels like what's happening to me, but that's true.
No, for procedure, you're completely correct.
I'll, I'll, I'll take it back.
So that the, for the moment, you're receiving that motion so that we can have a discussion and ask staff any questions. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, Mark, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, through the chair, um. I would say that our, our team uh, continues to be available. That we have, we've, we showed uh, one-on-one. Uh, to these residents through phone calls and we've done follow-up uh, to all of the residents as well to uh, provide updates. And also uh, we continue to make ourselves available. Uh, for those residents to ask any questions or receive uh, any clarification. Uh, we uh, are having a, or the province is hosting a town hall uh, next week. Uh, which will be focused on the geotechnical uh, components. And there will be, uh, there will be some. Other information available related to water quality and other, other things that have been worked on. Um, I think it, it. I think the capacity is, is a, is consideration is that uh, fully appreciate that we need to ensure that we're communicating uh, clearly to these folks. We have put out a newsletter this morning, uh, providing the updates and the kind of key uh, areas of work uh, that we've been focused on. And I think it's also that a lot of these pieces are, are not necessarily within our, our area that they take months. And the riparian piece was six months of work. Uh, focused work by a team of pushing these things forwards. Um, so it is, we, we don't have a lot of the answers and we've communicated that we don't have the answers and we've. We've communicated the areas that we are focusing on and our understanding of the needs. Um, I do just recognize that, that even in terms of just supporting the province's town hall, it's been a few weeks of work. Um, if we were to host Rome, there is uh, there's obviously the uh. There's the, we have to coordinate it uh, and get a support from probably an A B individual as well as uh, probably a few weeks of uh. The protectors team as well as E B S um, uh, communications and others, building and planning as well. I know the building and planning team is also available. Um, should there be any questions about permitting? But I think the permitting process does follow, and I, I don't want to speak for them, but. It does follow this, the, the regular uh, kind of permitting process that uh, all kind of essence across the S L R D. Follow. And that's.
Thanks, Chair. I'm curious to know the provincial session that we've just heard about for next week. Does it include a remote component? Can people participate virtually? Is that something we know at this point?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, uh, it, so the province is using a teams platform uh, for this uh, the town hall. Uh, questions uh, will be through kind of a type of questions and then they'll be brought into uh, the panel.
Okay. So as a follow-up, uh, I, I'd like to hear um, staff comparison of what's being proposed. Here at our table compared to the provincial session. Are, are the goals and objectives similar? Do they match up nicely? Or are we talking about two very different sessions?
Through the chair, I would, um, I think Director DeMare probably in terms of his vision, I think probably has what he's looking for. I think the uh, the purpose, the, the primary purpose of this provincial town hall is to uh, for them to communicate. Uh, the findings of the post wildfire and fire uh, natural hazard reports. So that is the primary purpose. Uh, understanding uh, that there's lots of related uh, topics uh, uh, that are involved here in terms of potentially riparian, um. Uh, yeah, cleanup activities, uh, water quality, uh, impacts and so that, that there is an opportunity for questions to be answered, uh, on that. Um, I don't know if they uh, completely align in terms of.
Uh, I might like to hear Director DeMare's thoughts on that motion.
Yeah, the, the, the intent of, of the one next week as, as uh. Director Phillips has stated is the geotechnical report. There are nineteen properties that were highlighted in that report. That may have issues due to the streams coming down of, off of Mount Purnles. So that's the, the gist of that session. Wasn't intended to deal with some of these issues that all the uh. Fifty-six property owners that were affected have.
Chair, and what, what the, what we have pushed back or requested is we don't want to sit. Not everyone understands that's a problem, that's the S L R D, that's a problem, that's the S L R D. So what we've said is we, we are going to have building. Protective services, recovery and myself there. Because we don't want what will likely happen is many questions that aren't related to the geotext. We, we don't want, that's not the place. This is not the place. It'll just be, so we have asked that we're there and we'll choose. If it's really ro, if it's really robust, we might say, hey, here's Mark's number. Give him a call. Just to be clear, his number is on every single newsletter to request information. Um, so we didn't want it to be a situation where we'd just be like, no, no, we're not talking about that. So we've. Hybrid it in a way where we still want the problems to be the primary. And we're there for it. Two ways.
Director Herford.
Thank you. If I'm, if I'm understanding, I'd go to say at the appropriate level, if I'm understanding this correctly and, and I, I like that approach. If we're getting to hypotheticals, if we come away from that session being like, wow, those, there was an overwhelming amount of questions for us. Then this was being, something like what's being proposed could be an action that flows. On the tail, on the foothills that, or perhaps. That hybrid address. May end up addressing some of the concerns. So it's like a, I, I feel like we're getting the cart before the horse on being prescriptive on what the next step is versus. This hybrid piece. Is that, is that how you're, you're seeing that?
Through the chair, yeah, yeah. Well, what I really liked to ask the board, however, is. I think that Director DeMare's suggestion is excellent. We don't have the money or the capacity to do it. I think his suggestion is excellent for many communities in many areas that would like virtual sessions to talk about what's going on in their community.
Yeah.
Um, or specific to if we have, if it goes to E O C level X, then the X minute on virtual sessions would be. It's about budget and capacity. Or what would we take off? In order for this to be focused on. And my concern is we're going into fire season and I can't take off getting ready for that. So the, the pride, it, when, when everything is said and done, a lot of the priority of Director Phillips' team would be in. Emergency response. Um, and recovery. We've been in recovery for, since October, we've been managing recovery. And this is overall strategic. If we want to go back to a strategic conversation, we're on a Ferris wheel of we're in recovery and then. Recovery. And so what would address that is a capacity where, no, actually you, your focus is prevention and recovery all the time. And we have E O C dedicated. That's, that's, I think where this conversation could be is where, what, what are, one of our goals is to engage more in the community in virtual public Q and A sessions. That, that's a good goal. And, or one of the focuses could be. You know, one-off, we'll, we'll put capacity, we'll put. To this.
Well, actually, I, I have speakers list. If you wanted to just respond to that particular thing and then I'll.
Could I just respond to that?
Yeah.
I, I think if we go back to the strategic plan that we just looked at. Where's our responsibility? To the community. Should that, that is the number one responsibility that we have. Are we meeting that with this group? Plus I quit into the board. Cause you're right. It is, this is very important. This is just the first major one that the S L R D has added. And are we fulfilling our commitment?
Um, I mean, we, we've been talking about recovery for a while in terms of being just as important as response. And so I think, you know. Director DeMare is, is pointing to some needs from his residents. I'm hearing some real capacity issues and we're trying to get ready for next fire season. Um, so I guess I would look to staff to say, you know, there's some needs from that community in terms of, of where to go next. And you're looking for some direction. You know, putting a town hall like this together is a substantial amount of work. I'm hearing capacity and budget issues. And is there another suggestion from staff in terms of how to perhaps. Uh, work towards, you know, solving some of these, these uh, outstanding concerns for those reasons. Can we, can we? Solving some of these these uh uh outstanding concerns for those reasons. Can we can we um Find another way or does staff have other ideas how how to attack this? I guess would be my question.
Yeah, uh through the chair, I The idea of uh the director for to mention about understanding what what comes up at this uh the town hall that is already scheduled for April third and fourth. Um and seeing uh if there are a number of outstanding questions or if there was an overwhelming A number of questions that were not able to be answered uh during that session, uh maybe a a reasonable way to understand the needs uh going forwards. Actually, I think I agree that the regular communication on the stuff um is necessary. I I think depending on the type of information uh that we have available, uh I think if there's different communication channels that may be more appropriate Uh versus a town hall is one uh option for getting this information of the community. I think uh I would add, I think the our team is uh very uh uh understanding of the challenges in the community. And uh for the riparian thing, I think it is recognizing the amount of work that we are pushing and changing provincial regulations in in, you know what I mean? To to address the the asks of that community. And it's a it's not an easy thing to do. Um so I think we do hear, but these things do take time and uh and they take focus to actually achieve it. So there's There's the opportunity cost that I think is is also necessary to kind of consider on these things.
Well, Chair. Um so having hea- heard that, I I very much advertise with sounds, you know, what you're trying to do and and respond to the needs of your Residents. I also, you know, I'm hearing staff very clearly um Personally, perhaps I I would think that maybe the the road forward would be that let's have this town hall set up through the province. Let's see what comes out of it. Let's give staff and director DeMar a chance to Hear that, process it, and decide what information and what what needs need to be met. Uh and then I would like to hear back from staff as as a plan. Town hall could be one option. Staff might have some other uh Ideas or opportunities how to address the needs. So My suggestion, because I'm hearing from both sides, would be to to wait out the provincial session, Assess the needs from there. You guys have conversations and sort of perhaps Come up with another plan to address those needs if that's If that's a powerful way to move forward.
Thank you, Director Richmond. And I have Director Matt, Director Cosco, Director Morden, and then Director.
Yeah, I think with uh the follow up to these issues, disasters, whatever you want to call it. Um, I think the province and in some cases the federal government has to be more engaged. And there has to be a timeline on their part. A follow along it takes them to get engaged. Because look at it, it's still a gravel pit, right? And in America, There's there's issues with our infrastructure that's now almost three years old. Um, the politicians seem to Show up when the disaster happens or shortly thereafter to get their photo ops And promise all kinds of money and all this stuff. And then they disappear and years later We're still trying to fix this stuff. So I think whether we go through the U B C M or however, we need to pressure The province and the feds, the the people that are responsible, That they have to get their act together and do this in a in a timeline, like all these folks That have lost their homes All across the country. I'm sure they're in the same boat. And it's just, it's not right to leave people hanging. And and it's not right to allow rumors to start Because somebody isn't giving them, you know, the right uh information and giving it to them Uh on a more personal level, not uh, you know, with an email or whatever. There needs to be um yeah, more engagement with the people that are affected personally. Thanks.
I'm good. Actually, both of my comments were.
Thank you. Let's see.
Um, the Casper Creek Fire was um on our doorstep at our family cottage. Um so I can sympathize with Almost sympathize sympathize how you your community is feeling. Um and I'm wondering if from what it sounds like at this town hall, The people they want to answer ask questions to are going to be there. Um so I can understand asking questions during it, but what about having a option afterwards, an allocated time To the fifty-six property owners that were lost, that were lost and Them being able to ask questions directly. Cause it sounds like it's all there. The the Staff is there, the E V, the equipment's all there, everything's there. So is it not possible to Do it then?
Um through the chair, um these are recurring next week on um April third and fourth. I it to do a uh depending on the scope of this, uh there would be planning that's required. Um in terms of the the general questions about every, I think there there will be space uh during the The provincial town hall to ask enough of those questions and hopefully uh they can be addressed uh yeah adequately. So Um, yeah.
Yeah, I can just understand how they would feel frustrated. They don't have a specific time rather than With, because we don't know how many people are going to show up to this. So and their questions might not get answered in an allocated time. So to have Half an hour afterwards for fifty-six people, it would be like, this is what I want to know. I think that might be reasonable to ask. I don't, but I don't. This process is out of my scope.
Yeah, through the chair. Uh the format will be all all the questions that uh are written uh will be You know, they they're able to write in any question they wish. We will, we will be able to capture those questions if they are answered or non answered and Which uh to uh to discussion before potentially be a way for us to understand. Uh yeah, it is a two hour session Uh already, which I think is adequate for uh quite a awesome uh yeah discussion with the community.
Okay, I do like um Director Richmond's um suggestion with that.
Get a sense of of how many more questions there are in the session. Yes, I'm sure you're planning on doing that anyway. I have Director Pedigale.
Yeah, a couple of things. I I appreciate Doc uh Director Richmond's suggestion. It makes sense to me. It sounds like actually this Might be almost exactly what Director DeMar is asking for. And and so I would like to To uh give that a chance to to play out and hopefully, you know, uh Director DeMar can encourage people to attend. Uh I'm hoping to attend at least one of them. Um I I am just sort of reflecting On the discussions over the last two days. Um and I know for myself, Even coming from municipal context, I'm understanding the budgeting and differences in strategic planning and so on. But, you know, to my mind, The the question was raised a few times yesterday in terms of budget, like Do we need to be putting more money this year into emergency response and planning and so on? And I think I sort of understood that from staff, we are putting some in for this coming year. We want to understand a little bit better before a bigger ask is probably coming. Uh but as a board, we didn't push back and say, hey, we know there's these other needs that we're not feeling we're able to meet. And so we declined to add more To this year's budget when we had the chance. Um we just talked about the strategic Priority areas and it does have emergency planning, response, recovery, talks more specifically where our focus is in that. We talked about the action plan. And you know, to my mind, it maybe this is just sort of for us as a a group to think about governance excellence and so on. I think those are create Uh uh prior uh main opportunities to sort of identify these sorts of gaps that we're seeing. And I I think, and I'm speaking more generally here, was sort of request, I think, identifying the need Uh and sharing some of the needs with the group is is critical. I think it does become a bit problematic when we're asking staff to do specific things. I think Our job is to identify these priorities and focuses, share community concerns, and then make sure the funding is there. Uh and then staff have the ability to address these things in the Most effective way possible, given our capacity. And and if there is a capacity gap, and it sounds like actually that's what we're hearing, like maybe we need to I don't know if there's a practical way to do it, but put a little more money in this year's budget. Uh I don't know, but for me, that's sort of where Us as a board should be tackling these things as opposed to giving fairly specific staff direction. And so it like absolutely agree, this is critical stuff. It's how can we most effectively support it? And and I think this this upcoming meeting is right now probably actually the best opportunity regardless of capacity and something.
And I know how difficult it was for staff to finally get the province to commit to involving those sessions next week. And um As a as an area director, I find probably more than half of the questions that come to me from constituents Have absolutely nothing to do with A R B and my role. Um and 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 so to know other resources is helpful, but It's not often satisfying people when I say something like, well, that's a matter for interior health. You know, they're just um so I yeah. Director Richmond.
Um, probably doesn't need this kind of motion, but maybe to give us a Direction forward here. Um I I would say maybe maybe I put forward a motion that says uh asking staff to report back after the provincial Town hall session um with a summary of that of those sessions as well as some suggested Um options for further engagement with the community when the affected homeless. So in other words, let's have this session. Let's see what happens. Let's give staff a chance To see what's coming out of the community, report back to this group and follow up. That's it.
Thank you. I see Director Compton.
Yep.
And let's follow.
Yeah, after.
Um, does This motion Create? I guess one of the wins of this meeting happening is it correctly Places the responsible party, the province, in the place of Addressing what's going on. And I'm just wondering if there's expectation with this motion. To me, that meeting seems like it's like the most important thing for this whole process. And so does for does this motion give expectations that The S L F is going to Accomplish other things, you know, a apart from what the province is able to deliver.
Um, from what I heard through Mark saying with what sounds like the focus of the provincial session, it sounds like that Won't address all the the concerns and then some of the questions coming out of the community. That's why I want staff to give staff an opportunity to hear that session, to hear if the province says no, that's not us, that's your regional government. Or you know what I mean? If there's things that are deflactive, things that are come up, there's a a a number of unanswered questions through this session That staff and and Director DeMar feel that the community still really needs access to. That gives staff the opportunity to come back and say, yeah, this is what we've heard. This is still outstanding. Or me, you know, and I do all that come back go, province nailed it. Covered everything. Everybody's really happy, letting sound. That's that's an actual response, but I feel to be somewhere between.
If the motion is um that staff report back to the board, I would second that.
Okay, so that motion is amended and.
It's not amended. That was the original motion.
The motion.
You don't amend it. Don't get me wrong.
And you have it seconded.
Improved. Let's just call it improved.
Um, now.
Could I respond to?
Yes, Director DeMar.
Director Edingale's comments. I I somewhat agree with you. But there is another way that this could be brought forward To be put into work, but and that's the community Asking for and not a director. So let's take a look at that scenario. There is a committee for that working group for that fifty-six properties there. And uh through a society, the Bridger Valley Community Association, there are committee under that now. They could bring, make a request to the board To have that information session where I'm not part of it. Cause that's another way to get it onto that work plan. And and make it a priority. I'm just making that comment. Cause that is a different way of of coming at it.
Yes, yeah, Director Pedigale.
Well, and again, maybe we're stepping into the conversations we'll have as part of the government's excellence. But in my understanding, actually That sort of request, we come to staff, staff would share with us some of the priorities, the the people, the committee would share with us, and us as a board would decide Do we agree that's a priority? Are we going to put the the funding and the 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 resourcing there? And staff would go up accordingly uh to the funding we've given and the priorities we've set through a strategic plan and so on, as opposed to A community group expecting the or any board member expecting we directly dictate the work plan. I don't In my mind, that's not how um effective organization will will operate in in the long term. And I know Um, and I guess to the resolution, I I support the the resolution. I I would hope if something comes back and staff identifies gaps, The the question of the conversation would be staff saying, hey, With our current capacity, we're not able to meet the sort of needs or wants of the community. Uh what do you want us to do here? If you don't give us more resources or change in priority focus, we're going to stay where we are. If you would like us to figure out the best way to handle this, Here's the sort of capacity funding and priority changes we would need. We would agree or not. And if we agreed, then staff would figure out the best way to implement that. And so the ask would be though for more funding, priority shift and so on at that point. But again, for me, I'm I'm hoping this next meeting will negate the need to do that. But I think if there needs to be a lot of that, in my mind, how it should happen.
Uh again.
Uh Director Hurford, I I just I I'm just trying to manage the meeting in in the proper way. And so what we should be doing now is just speaking to the motion. I'll remind you, Director.
Thank you for that. Um I'm supportive of this direction and I think um Uh it's it's been clear that uh there's um Uh a need for more information for and a and a desire for more information uh for the folks affected by by this. And um And I think um I'm hoping that the outcome of the of the meeting will leave us with As much as perfection solves uh, you know, something that we're, you know, good to strive for is is likely will outline um What the gaps are in the uh and and where the questions are and who owns those answers.
Yeah.
And um and then we can talk about what how best to To uh to get those answers to the people that need to hear those answers. And To me, uh our earlier discussions around which mechanism to be used to achieve that was was challenging. I'd like to understand what the problem is coming out of Coming out of this, like where what those gaps are. Do we have the capacity to address them? And how best to do and how best to do that if if uh if there's a bunch of pieces for for us as a board. So I'm more comfortable with this with this step and then um And uh I I would also like to uh, you know, back to our strategic planning um Piece, there's the um Director Mac made some some comments around advocacy and the need for other orders of government. I think that's Those that's absolutely on point and lines straight up directly up with our strategic um strategic plan. And we've had examples of Successes in that area through the work that staff's done ju- just recently. Um and these pieces are still moving. So I'm I'm really uh happy with the as much as things could be happening um Uh faster. I'm happy with the movement that we're seeing from the from the province uh or that there is movement, you know, and it's not far enough and fast enough, but but uh I I do think um This next step uh from them is a major win that it's happening and uh hopefully we can capitalize on that as an organization and as that um Uh and the residents will I was happy to hear CEO Paul talk about that. Not necessarily the united front, but the folks being on the call at the virtual table that are responsible. So when it does get passed, it gets passed from this person to this person that's also on the call. So it's not Just uh the shuffling concerns to whoever's not in the room Um or on the call. So I I'm I'm optimistic about that. I look forward to um to attending that call and and uh getting filling some gaps I have myself. Thank you.
You too, yeah. Director Procton.
Uh through the chair. Did you intend to report back to us on this meeting? At a future meeting? Like, do you need this with with this presentation?
Director Penningill?
Uh, Bruce? Chair, I think, um, I'm hoping that this has answered a lot of the questions, uh, that come from the community, um, I don't know if I would have done a direct information report on my service request, but I think I'm hoping that it's going to be valuable exercise for the community, and we'll actually as a team get some learnings about how we communicate these things forward. Um, I, we, I know we have been writing information reports on general kind of updates related to our close wildfire recovery activities, and then and this would likely have been one of the topics of recovery, to be in the number two part of what we're.
Thank, thank you, uh, um, I'll support the the motion that I think the the report coming back is is a good idea, I am a little nervous about sort of resolutions that direct staff's work at at this level, but I think uh, this resolution is important enough to support, so I'll be in favor of it.
Any other comments on the resolution? Then I'll call the question, um, and ask for those in favor of the resolution to raise your hands. And that looks unanimous to me. So no one is opposed, that the resolution is passed, thank you.
So, I'd like to make a comment. Okay, first of all, I want to thank Arkansas team. They've done an amazing job of, number one, being able to get this town all on. And number two, for the riparian uh, changes for last year's wildfires in B C. So that is very, I know how much work it was, and I just want to compliment you one more time. Uh, this is, again, the very first major event where we lost structures in the S L R D. You know, we're we're setting the template for moving forward, and we need to make sure as our, our strategic plan says that we're working for our communities and community members. And communication is number one. And I know we're, we're working on a communication program, it definitely getting better. We get newsletters, we got areas where people can make comments on and so on and so forth. But when it, when it comes to um, a disaster like we've had up at, up in the Bridger Valley due to that wildfire, um, we need to make sure that we're working and and all the learnings that we're we're going through right now that they get implemented, and I know there's, we just approved some funding, uh, to try to secure some funding on the communication program for it, and I think this piece here that I'm just talking about is these virtual sessions where people can learn from each other are critical. And and to your comment, Director Penningill, yes, we need to put funding in to be able to do that. Because these, those sessions are very important, where people could actually talk to each other and move forward. Thank you.
Next item, uh, also Director DeMar, status of the Brailor and Sewer Upgrade Project. Thank Director Phillips, and I see staff here for this. Um, would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, no, um, the Brailor and Sewer Project has been going on for a long time, and, and, uh, and it's not, and it's, and and the, um, the project is not complete yet. Started in twenty fifteen, when the ministry, um, said that you guys have to get it up to standards, and here we are now, in twenty fourteen, and it's still not completed. And we need to, we need to finalize that project, and, um, so I I'd like the staff to give an information report back to the board has been done in previous years, so that we understand where we're at, including implications on financial impacts, considerations that need to be taken to get that project done. There was a proposal in the growing community fund for four hundred thousand dollars to complete it. And, um, and unfortunately, that wasn't approved. So the task is, you know, where are we going to get the extra funding if we need it? And what are the tasks that still need to be done? That were included in that four hundred thousand pounds. So, that's what this resolution is about.
So before any resolutions are made yet, Director Richmond?
Just, again, if I can get a staff perspective on what that looks like, is that information easy to bring together, what does that look like?
Thank you.
Chair, uh, this is, it's on our work plan to bring back an information report on this. Um, I was hoping to know more about the Community Works Fund, so I could provide some, uh, funding options, but we can bring it back earlier with the information request.
Good. Community Works, thank you.
So if it's already in the works, do we need a resolution on this, or is this in the work plan?
Um, I mean, yeah, it's in work plan, I could bring it back, uh, and um, like I said, I was waiting to hear more about funding, but I can provide the information without options for funding, um, and and give an update.
Okay, so I'll I'll start, I'll start with this, this, uh, I'll make that motion as presented.
The motion is that staff bring an information update report to a future board meeting regarding the Brailor and Sewer Upgrade Project. And this report is to include what has been completed in phase two and so forth, and we are charged with this. And CEO Paul?
I'm, I'm wondering if it could be that staff bring information update report for a future board meeting regarding the Brailor and Sewer Upgrade Project. Yeah, the director's report informs the rest, the through line for staff. And wanting to understand that this report would come with less information than planned, what if planned? We're okay with that.
Are you okay with shortening that, Sal?
I'm agreed with the first sentence.
Just personally, and all right.
I'll amend that resolution.
Let's, um, amended and, yeah, Director Compton, right, it's amended. So I have this moved, I don't have it seconded. Thank you, Jesse Martin seconded, so we'll speak to that motion as amended, thank you, Jack.
I'll be pausing this, I just don't think this is the right way to use, um, for, uh, resolutions, I think we, you know, work plans set out, team sits down, thinks through when the best time to present something like this to the board is, works with the board chair through agenda and uh, setting, and I heard Mr. Butt say that he'd like to wait until he has all the information to present this, and I think requiring a report before staff have the information that they would like, um, is it something that I'm supportive of?
Director Richmond?
Kind of similar to that, I'm trying to, you know, with these, all these items, I'm trying to be understanding and empathetic that these are important issues for this area and for the director, so you know, we want to be able to bring stuff forward, but we talk all the time about how that process looks and what order things come to us and what staff work on today and tomorrow and the next day. So hearing that it's in the work plan, hearing that there's funding options that could come a little bit later, I, you know, from, I'm personally willing to wait for this report for staff, when staff is ready to present it to us. Um, so I do have a similar presidency as Director Compton, in that if we start throwing these motions out going, okay, well, I want to see this, and, you know, a report on this, that, and the other. Some of them are coming, some of them aren't, they're in a timeline that's been explored by staff, I just feel that we're gonna, we're gonna really sort of confuse the the staff work plans by doing too many of these types of resolutions. I would be more comfortable, Director Grant, I would be more comfortable recognizing that it's coming and funding options will be attached to it when it's ready. I would be more comfortable waiting till staff is ready to just present it on their normal work.
Director Hurford?
Yeah, thank you, um. Yeah, when I saw this item, I was wondering, um, you know, where the project, so we had a quick, this quick update that gets coming, and there's there's this really big piece, which is the funding piece that we're waiting to have more information on. That's great, I wasn't sure if this was sitting in the bottom of the fuel list somewhere, and like, so that was, that is helpful, and the fact that it's on a work plan, I I don't I don't want to diminish the importance of that, like, I think that's remarkable, because there's all sorts of things that just aren't, that were a priority of the board in some other, some previous time. Um, so I I'm, I'm inclined to let let that process, um, continue, it's been a long, I I understand it's been a, there was some, lots of learning in this, in preparation for this discussion, and and thank you for, to, uh, Director DeMar for the background on this, I think it's, um, it wasn't a project that I had, um, uh, extensive, um, exposure to, so I found that beneficial, um, and, um, my, so I'm inclined to not support this, but when I think about, you know, reading minutes and going through and and seeing a defeated motion like this, to me, defeating this motion, I don't want that to be seen as deprioritizing the this work by not supporting this motion. So, I, I, in my comments, I get, I'm gonna say that, I think that, uh, you know, if I was just to go off reading minutes and to help prioritize my work as as staff, which is often the case about against a defeated motion of this nature generally is a deprioritizing of something, but I don't think that's what's happening here, but I think that, um, um, rescinding and not making that happen would be procedurally better for for my mind, but I I I don't, I don't think it's supportable at this point, but that's my only caution, but I think we have good understanding in the room, but procedurally.
Director Compton, then Director Penningill?
So I think, I, I feel like we have, um, all the information except for the financial piece of it. And and I'm just wondering if we could support this motion when all the information is is available for staff to bring back to the board? Is that?
That's what was gonna happen anyways.
Right, exactly, so I think, can we not support it? By, but we're missing the financial piece of it, because we're not sure about grants or whatever, right, and we were waiting for that, you were, you were waiting for that? All right, so can we just wait for that and then bring it all back, and and that's what the original piece was, but I mean, if we could support that motion to move that when that happens, information back to the board.
Just a comment, um, as you stated, Director Hurford, that background information was critical, because we've got so many new directors on on the board that don't realize how long this has been taking. And every year that passes, the costs go up and up and up and up. As we witnessed with the wastewater treatment plant in North Vancouver. So, a- and that's kind of the urgency to to keep moving forward. All I've done is the motion is now, it's just the first sentence, that staff bring back an information report to a future board meeting regarding the Brailor and Sewer Upgrade Project.
Right.
So it's at an upcoming board meeting. Does it has to be done right away?
Okay, Director Penningill?
Yeah, I mean, with that understanding, it's a little easier to support this, I'm a bit hesitant because uh, it sounds like that's exactly what's already happening, so the motion seems redundant, um, and I guess the thing I wanted to flag for me is, you know, we did have the discussion yesterday about our governance and the work related to the governance plan, and sort of talked about in the procedures bylaw, we're gonna dig into, I think, to my mind, how we as a board effectively resolve some of these things, because I think in implicit in the ask for this resolution is a director saying, there's something in terms of priority that I think we're missing as a group, and I'd like to have a discussion about that and move that forward in a positive way. And I think we're not on the same page about how we can effectively do that as a group, and and so I just sort of want to flag that for that, thing we talked about yesterday. We need to make sure where we're having that discussion, to make sure that we can, uh, you know, which one, regardless of which one of us has the sort of concern, that we can bring it forward in a way that, you know, have a discussion we need to have, and for me, though, I think.
I'm so sorry.
Where I am in on, I just feel that staff is doing the work, um, and yeah, I I just don't want to sort of add extra resolutions that, for me, don't add clarity, because it's it's already being done.
And Director French? I apologize for that forum call.
Thank you, Chair, um, I won't be supporting the motion, and it's purely from a a good governance and process point of view. Uh, I I see this as work that is already planned. And I also see this as a governing body directing work for staff, why do we have a chief administrative officer if we at this table are are directing the work, and I'm with, um, Director Hurford, and in his thought of maybe the most appropriate thing to do here is to rescind the motion because of the optics of, um, folks reading through minutes and potentially seeing this board voting down this motion, not because we don't support the work to be done, but purely because um, we feel that this is not the way for this board to to govern. Thank you.
Great, are there any more comments? Uh, Director DeMar? Would you like to call a question on a vote? Yes, okay. Um, all those in favor of the motion?
Could you, so the motion is just the, uh, the first sentence?
That staff bring an information update report to a future board meeting regarding the Brailor and Sewer Upgrade.
So, yeah.
Yeah, same.
So if that's, if that's a question, given where we are now, we've had a bunch of comments, but if we say vote it down for process reasons, but we're expected to come, if we put it down, it's going to hold, have any?
Yeah, that was my question.
If we don't, yeah, it's simply meant to come back, if we put a motion saying, basically saying the opposite. We all wanted to come back, we all agreed to come back, some of us just feel that it should be on staff's work plan as they see fit, so.
I have an idea.
I'm glad you do, Jack.
I'll move an amendment that says at, on 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 staff's intended timeline.
On staff's intended timeline?
Yeah.
I'll speak to, I'll, can I speak to that?
Speaking to the amendment, yeah.
You know, I I'll support the amendment, just to get this over the line here, because I think we're all on the same page here, but I think, you know, what we're, what we're talking about here is the fact that every week, and this is not a slight in any way, you guys are, everybody's trying to do their job and represent the residents, but if a director brings three, four of these reports every single month, we're gonna turn turn the work plan upside down. We need to have confidence in our staff that they prioritize what they've heard from us in the way they've heard from us, so you know, I get the intent, especially even more so personally with the wildfire situation or recovery situation, I get the intention of all these reports, I just want to caution us that this is the discussion that results in these motions. I think maybe a good place to start is a question to staff, hey, are we going to see a report on this? And if so, when? If that's not acceptable, then we have a conversation, is, look, this has to be moved up, and we all have that conversation as to why it needs to be moved up in the timeline. Uh, but I think that these conversations should start with a question that sounds like is this item coming back to the board and when? And are we comfortable with that? Um, so I'll support the motion now, just to get it going, because I think we all want to see this come back, so.
And only, only Director DeMar can speak to the amendment? Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll agree to the amendment.
All right, then we have to vote on the amendment, all in favor? Amendment is passed, so that staff bring an information update report to a future board meeting regarding the Brailor and Sewer Upgrade project, uh, according to the staff timeline, on the staff timeline is the resolution that we're voting on, all in favor?
So I didn't, I didn't speak to you.
Oh, sorry, Sal?
No.
You're okay?
I would like to speak to him.
Oh, Jack?
I know I made the amendment, I'm gonna vote against this.
I know I made the amendment, I'm gonna vote against this. I think, and, and every single meeting, Area A's bringing stuff to move their items ahead and then, you know, Area C better bring theirs because if they don't, then the Area A stuff goes up the list. It's like, what are we doing? This is not the way we should be doing things. Because um, it's, it's not about Area A getting a lead on Area C, it's about us moving together. And so I won't be supporting this motion.
Then Director D'Amelio.
Well, I'll, I'll submit a comment after.
Okay. Hard question. Alright, all in favor of the amended resolution? We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, and also Paul on screen seven. So I don't have to call for opposed, we know that's the majority.
No.
You still have to call for opposed, opposed? And Director Richmond, Robert, Proctor, and Brent, all against. So that resolution is passed. And.
When these resolutions go to the chair for approval, to be on the board meeting, I'm wondering through our governance review, whereby the, the chair, working with the CEO, have a look at it. And resolutions like the ones that you presented, all three of these. And can work with staff to see if they've got it in their work plan. So that, and then that could come back to the person that's making these resolutions, saying it's already in the work plan. Did you still want it to be on the agenda? Or did you want to modify it to be on the agenda? Food for thought.
Alright, and I'd like CEO Paul to have the opportunity to say a word here.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make, mention that during this, I did make a note under Governance Excellence for us to discuss internally with staff, how we support directors in their director report and a decision tree that would do that. It, was it a notice of motion? Because then that forces, that, that's the difference. It ha, it needs to be on the table, forcing it.
Right.
And then is it already on the work plan? So those, that decision tree, like how do we help directors for a decision tree? So I think this conversation feeds to that discussion of Governance Excellence, because we're here to support the success of everyone at this table and the success of the models. So.
Director Proctor?
You also reach out to the chair and say, there's something I'd like to have on a, a future agenda. And the chair can talk to the CEO as they do agenda setting. And I think that that's an excellent, an acceptable way of doing things also. But I, I'm concerned by the directors reports. I don't think that they're additive.
Director Pennington?
Yeah, just in defense of Director Demare, I thought I'd heard in a previous meeting uh, some suggestion that this had been staff's ask about how to do this. And it sounds like there's maybe some confusion about how we do this best. And, and I'm, I've been assuming that in procedures by the discussion, that's exactly one of the things we're gonna be talking about, so.
This is the way to do things?
Oh, yes. That's part of the procedures bylaw review.
Sorry, that, we're intending to, these directors reports is how we want to do agenda setting?
That's been some people's understand.
Oh, I see, okay, so, okay.
No, no issue.
Okay, I see, I was like, alright. Sorry.
There's another reading? And nine point four? Nine point four. Request from Director Demare for a virtual information session for the Goldbridge Water Service Condition Assessment and Asset Management Plan.
Can I speak to it?
Please do.
Yeah, with our asset management program moving forward, and we, you know, we've identified a lot of areas that are gonna need work. And the Goldbridge Water Service Condition Assessment and Assisment Management Plan was initiated by staff. And then they came to Director Area A for additional funding to do a really good, uh, uh, plan. The plan is excellent. And how do we communicate that to the community? So this is you know, and I, I did mention this prior to the wildfire, or actually it was during the wildfire. And we got this report just all the time, just after the wildfire started. And, well, I did talk to Omar about the virtual information session on this, upon this plan at that time. And I, I know that it's been active with the E O C and Omar's involved with the E O C and the department also. But we need to figure out how we're going to get this information out to the public in a meaningful way. I've looked at that report quite a bit. And I've thought about funding the same company to have a report that they can, that can be shared with the public. Very similar to the, uh, the Braylawn Water Service. When I funded the study there to move one, one water line from the back of the front piece onto a main street. Because it was causing issues and it was a project that I wanted to do. And I funded a map that was easier to read and understand, that was shared with the public. So when we move forward with our asset management plan, how are we gonna get the information to the public? So they understand what their, what their services look like and what needs to be done in the future. So that's what this, this director report is about. In one way, as I've talked about previously, is virtual sessions, so people can ask questions online.
Any questions from the board, comments?
So, and maybe this is something that, an answer would have to come back in a future meeting. If the service area that covers this, uh, would it generally cover communications around this sort of topic? And so where I'm getting to is, is if this, if as a board, we thought this, the things the service area is covering wasn't communicating adequately, is this where we could ask for, uh, or ask for more resources here with a comment that we would like to see communications improved and so on, and that's why we're wanting to put more resources there and, and, you know, the have a discussion with the, the community about when they're, they're willing to fund that level of additional communication. And so, or is communication always through general government and there's a bit of a?
For the chair. It's a really good question. I probably can't answer it technically, absolutely correctly. I would say that project budgets could be, could have commu, uh, robot communications inserted into them. And we do have projects that communications managers that they go to, they put their time to that project. Whether or not a service agreement, a, a service area would cover that is a question that I'm getting a nod of a yes, it does.
And, and so I guess that, like, again, for me, this is very specific of directing staff work sort of outside of strategic planning we've done and so on, outside of the budget. And so for me, the, the sort of important ask here is, is more communication, especially on this topic. And as I understood the budget we did, this is where the area director would be able to sort of ask for that when they're doing the budgeting and, and say, hey, I want more budget here for this reason. You can contemplate that as a board. Um, and so I think also there's a, a piece in the Governance Excellence about making sure we all understand that's the process we go through. We agree that is the process to do it. And so I guess that's how I would prefer to be able to tackle this kind of thing.
Through the, through the chair. I would, similar to the prior mention, the detail of this move from strategic to tacticals. How we can do. Uh, there is an asset management project underway that is on the work plan. And this, like, our assets, all our, the assets are all part of, part of that, so it would be reported on. My, my concern would be, so then another area director could say, I want my asset management report as well on this asset a bit sooner than the overall of boards. So for me, what I'm hearing from this is we have, we have some really good strategies for Governance Excellence. We have some really good pathways forward, um, through these discussions that we know we need to dig into. And that the needs of the communities, and I don't know if all communities, some might be more digital, digitally, social media, scrolls, click and scroll, um, the needs of many communities, of communities being voiced here are more investments into more frequent and more virtual live information sessions. And that our overall management of our communications should consider that in the future.
Director Pennington, Director Hurford?
Yeah, and I think that's what I was trying to say in a clumsy way. I'm hearing overall, I need for more communication. We need to get that into our budget and state that as board at communication level, we support this, but we don't get into the details of how. But we do need to make sure the resource is there and we do that through our budgets. And a very general level of strategic plan, but we don't, um, yeah, I don't think we should get to the level of how you communicate on specific projects. But if communication is a concern, we need to make sure there's more resources for communication.
Through the chair, I think if, for the single staff model, I think a really good rule line here is to say, you know, as, as fledgling as I am right now, in my two months in, it's to provide direction on the how and do with staff. And if I'm not doing that right, or I'm not meeting the needs of this table, that's, that's addressed directly to me in my performance review. And clearly communicated as, as, as a path forward. Specific to this one, I don't know if the staff want to specifically talk to this or if the board wants to specifically talk about this subject, but I, I, that's my overall perspective.
I'll keep it to the overall perspective and then we'll see if you want to hear. Yeah, I, I will speak to the, for my dear, but right now, but the, I think that, um, the, the, this one sort of brought up that, that service, that be area challenge, because when we think about our overall budgeting, which we just went through, and I know that we, I was excited, it was a really weird one, we'll bring it back here now. And I think about a resident in the, in any electoral area and what actually ends up on that bill, it's different. It's so different from, from property to property, depending on which service area they fall in and so on. And I can see having specific questions with specific service areas. So you have a subset of the population that's really interested in something. And maybe they are seeing the, the, um, you know, an undue financial burden or, or a challenging situation with that service area. And I, and, um, and how we deal and how we deal with, with that, I think is, um, I've been trying to figure out how I, how I reconcile that in my mind alone, like someone looking at their bill and having concerns specific areas, which is generally when the concerns come, right? When it's a bill at other times, other areas. So, um, throughout the discussions today, I've been thinking about, you know, how, what's an appropriate way uh, to feels like more, more communication or different form of communication to the area, to the areas. Uh, CEO Paul brought up the, the, uh, what is, what, what is, feels like a bridge too far, the monthly pieces that, that some elected, um, area directors have with their, you know, in other, in other, um, areas. But maybe this is where something, setting some goals about, you know, a standing, you know, once a, once a year this happens and residents of each electoral area can come and do, and do these things. Like having some set, some set pieces to maybe get ahead of some of these things. I get that we, it feels like we're maybe in a bit of a deficit of that communication. We're not communicating in the way, in way that, uh, or maybe at the level that the folks are interested in. And I, I do agree with CEO Paul that that's in this model, that comes down to like making sure we define what those, that level is and task our CEO with achieving that. So, um, but again, being this prescriptive is, I'm not comfortable with. But that area, service area aspect of it really, I don't know what we, I don't know exactly what we do with that. But I do like Director D'Amelio's suggestion, indicating on, some of these service areas do require more um, will require more communication incorporated to that, that, um, into the service itself, I guess. So that's just general using. I don't think I have a, I can't think I can turn that into a question, unfortunately, but.
Director Demare?
And I just want to make a comment on, on particularly this one here. Is that the Goldbridge Water System? And then, and you see in the background to it, again, the background, so you under, understand the situation with that, with that service. During the wildfire, in both Braylawn and Goldbridge, people stayed behind. And they actually put sprinklers on, on all the buildings and tested each water system to see if it, the water system would handle. And you may be pervy to that, what they did. But they tested the Braylawn water system with all these sprinklers on, on houses and it, and it worked. They tested it on the Goldbridge water system and it did not work. EC wildfire came along, it helped melt with pumps down on the Bridge River and facilitated enable a pump to have all the sprinkler systems work. They also had a two-inch line open at each place to make sure that fireworks could be used from the fire hydrants. The individual people there did that, did that test. And, and, and that's the importance of this met, asset management plan. That it talks about that aspect at the, like, for fire situations, that system is not capable of handling it. I wrote the report in detail. And that's why this one was important. Now, again, that goes back to what we talked about when resolutions like this go in. Maybe it is a discussion with the chair prior to, to see if it's on the work plan. And where it's at on the work plan. But in my opinion, if we're gonna be funding these condition assessment and asset management plans, which we need to do for all the various services in the electoral areas, somehow there's got to be a communication program that goes with it back to the public. If, if this conversation only does that to get it into, into policies or the programs, I'm comfortable with that. As a resident who's been into service, I would like to know what the conditions are. Sewer, whatever, whatever they are. Thank you.
Yeah, as area B, I would be appreciative of a bit more communication on some of our service area, Anderson Lake Park, for example. Where, um, yeah, I can see, I can see we could do better there. Director Proctor, yes?
Director, this review of the fuel, I, and, and, and these, this, these communications updates. Do you have uh, uh, eyes on how you are intending to take those on over the next months and years? Or is that something that's still being, um, considered? Like where this fits in that work?
Director, it's a good question. So there are things, uh, not done in the form, not yet. Through the chair, it's a good question. So there are things I'm not done in the format yet. Similar to what was discussed yesterday, the district squamish is doing thing, focusing on saving lives and then. Going down, uh, that would inform it. So right now I'm seeing webs and I'm seeing through lines, how, what the timelines and everything. This strategic, this, this strategic, strategic, oh my gosh. The strategic directions are discussed today and then the fuel review that will really help me understand because right now. There are things on the fuel that I don't know if the board is, is even wants to consider anymore. So once we get that taken away, but. Or this thing's missing, how did that get missed? That's really going to help a lot. So asking for some patience and time. I have to see the full picture, but I'm amazed about. What I can see now compared to. A month ago.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Should I ask staff for?
An update?
An update?
I'm in a situation where, where is it at on, yes, please.
Through the chair, um, so this, this specific report is a hundred and sixty three pages and generally not something I think would. Be shared with the public. It's a report that would help us apply for grants. Um, and a report for staff to. Take that information and put that into our asset management plan. Um, the asset, there is an asset management plan, it is part of this report, but that's not. Our asset management plan, that's a recommend, a consultant's recommendation on what we should do. Um, whether it's feasible or not, is, is up to us to decide. Um, I, so I, I think there, we, we could provide information to the public, um, in a very compressed manner. Of, of what the system is and, and kind of upgrades and needs, but, um. I, I don't know the information session is necessarily the best tool for that.
Thank you. That would lack.
Yes, but within your work plan. Just what you're talking about.
Uh, no, it, it wasn't to, to provide a public update on. On the condition of the laws, well, it wasn't.
And Director DeMar.
This was brought up at the. OCP Public, Public Pity. By one individual. That, um, that's paid sixteen hundred dollars for. For the service. That he couldn't even run a sprinkler during the waffler. And it's, it's a concern for them, of course, because we're going back into another, another, uh, fire season. I'm not sure of all the rest of the. Water services that are within the electoral areas, that they're capable of. People using, be able to use the sprinklers. To protect their households. But in this case. That's exactly.
Through the chair, and that, that's another big concern for us as infrastructure holders is. The public using our infrastructure, not necessarily trained firefighters. Um, it's pretty easy to, to do some damage to our system, so that's a big concern for me. And maybe a discussion with our fire chief as well.
Yep.
Thank you. And Director Penny Gill.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I think, I, I thought I heard though that some. Higher level understanding of where this thing is will come back with the asset management planning work. As part of.
So in that sense, it's in, it's in the works, is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand. It sounds like, you know, it's not like, yeah. Maybe not a specific piece on a specific topic, but in the asset management plan, it's going to cover, cover a number of things such as this. When that's ready. So. Um, but well, any, any, this, this is part of our assets and it will be included with, with any kind of, uh, yeah, updates. Um, the communication piece was not specified.
Was a motion made? Thank you.
No.
Um.
Motion received.
Motion to receive. Seconded by Director Hopfo. I'll call a question. Ron Baker. And opposed, the opposed Director DeMar. And. Also give that. So we received. Thank you. There's one more item on this agenda, eleven point one.
Russell White.
I'm sorry, Director DeMar, yes, did you go against that?
Just a question for my information. So. Sal doesn't have, uh, money available or we don't have money available. For the, uh, the sewer upgrade or whatever. Have we ever decided what we're doing specifically with? The, uh, provincial money that the regional district got for the four electoral areas? I know there was some, a wish list that was thrown out by staff of what we were going to do with that money. But we never, we never confirmed it or voted on it. So. Well, uh, what did we get? One point six million or something or?
Did we not have a discussion about that in degree? I, I think you might have missed that meeting and, no, we didn't. We talked about it in the last.
Yeah, we didn't. We, we, there was like four items in transit that were all identified. There was a list provided by staff. Discussion that came back a second time to the board with a revised list and it was.
Yeah, it's been morbid.
Okay.
Thank you, Sal. We are up to the Minister of Emergency Management and Climate Readiness. Bowen Ma, the letter to chairs, Emergency and Disaster Management Act. Welcome back.
I don't have a, any specific presentation on, uh, the same. Uh, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, my God.
And also.
Answering any questions.
With the caveat that I have not done, been able to think of as much as I'd like. Um, but I'm also, also happy to outline, uh, our, our proposal for the, roughly, uh, forty eight thousand dollars that was received. Uh, to support, uh, the, the, the Emergency Management Disaster, uh, Act, uh, to just engage with the requirements.
I'm looking for questions from the directors. Seeing any, um.
Motion to receive.
Yeah. Motion to receive seconded by Director French. Uh, it's in my list. Seeing none, we'll see that, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, decision on late business, we have, oh, well, we have. Revised agenda thirteen point one, we don't have to decide on that one. Whoops, we do, I know, we do also have that. We have, uh, thirteen point one correspondence for information. That came in from Fortis, we see about the discharge permit.
Excuse me.
Yes, sorry, Angela, yeah.
Through the chair, um, I believe Director DeMar had a late item that he wanted the board to consider. If he is wanting to add it to the agenda, it needs to be done as part of twelve, so.
Needs to be done as part of twelve, okay. So, so the Fortis letter came in and it's part of the amended late agenda. But now we're making a decision on adding thirteen point two. Director DeMar, would you like to?
Twelve? Just, just, all we need is. Information on what he is wanting to bring forward and then we would add it to the agenda if the board is in approval of that. As item thirteen point two, so we just need a highlight.
It's a response from, uh. U, UBCM Resolution Regarding Crown Granted Mineral Claims. And, and, uh, Surface Rights Board. Surface Rights Board Resolution that was presented at. At the twenty twenty. Twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty three.
UBCM. I just want to speak to it, the response. It's good.
Okay, so moved by Director DeMar, seconded by Director Hopfo. So this is just to add this as a late business item. Um, is there anyone opposed to that? Okay, seeing then that will be thirteen point two. And first we will look at. Correspondence for information from Fortis. That we received and Director Penny Gill.
Yeah, just a motion to receive and I'll speak to it if seconded.
Seconded by Director Richmond, and please go ahead and speak to it.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, unfortunately, maybe the, the outcome here isn't a surprise. I would just note that. One of the resolutions that Squamish has going forward to the Lower Man Local Government Association, and I'm. Working from my head at the end of a couple of long days, but basically for the province to look a little deeper at cumulative impacts. And cumulative assessments of some of these things, which seems as a gap for me, but, uh, so that advocacy work is, is ongoing.
Excellent. All right, so we have a motion to receive. Um, and thank you for your comments. Did you want to say something? No? Okay. Um, anyone opposed to the motion? No? So over to you, Director DeMar.
Thank you. I, unfortunately, I missed out on the roundtable yesterday, but, uh. The SRD, I, I got it written up here, the SRD Resolution at the twenty twenty three UBCM. Convention Regarding Crown Granted Mineral Claims and Service Rights Holders has been responded to by the province. They have started a Mineral Tenure Act modernization, modernization process. And I and another Brailor resident participated in the first information session. This is a portion of what was on a UBCM compass newsletter regarding the information sessions and that's how I found out about it. And, uh, the province has initiated. Work up to modernize the Mineral Tenure Act. UBCM members have endorsed several resolutions seeking amendments to the MTA. To address potential real conflicts between surface and surface, subsurface rights holders. So that's very, very positive and, uh. Both myself and the, uh, Brailor resident that attended that session had input. During that session, so it was really, really good. And, uh, they're all in another one on April fourth. And anybody that had attended it can attend. There was over a hundred fifty people on the session. Excellent, excellent. That just goes to our advocacy piece. Thank you for supporting that. That motion I presented at the Grady Inn release.
Mr. Question, the NFCU Director. So the session that's on April fourth, is that also on? The rights of property owners as far as the mineral rights go?
They've taken that information that they got and they're going to present it.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay, Director Hefrich.
No, I, uh, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's, it's always worth, um. Celebrating when we get, when advocacy starts to sort of take, take hold and we start to see some action. Um, I just wondered, do we have the, um. A response letter? Do we have something we can add to the, to the record to sort of help get this, this out? I appreciate a verbal update, but. If there's a, if there's anything that we can, that we can also include, I, I'd like to, to read a little bit more on it or be pointed to the.
What happens is the SLRD, there's two, two of the motions that were, um, that we sent in. Uh, were responded to, the other one was regarding the Ministry of Trans- Transportation and Infrastructure. So the SLRD does get. It'll come to the board.
Okay, this is, this is.
Letters from the UBCM will be sent to the S thirty, like is done in previous years.
Yeah, great.
So early breaking, good news, thank you. Uh, now.
I'm with the seat of verbal report.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, so it's on record, excellent, yep. Seconded by Director French. More to pose, seeing none, that motion is carried, to see that, thank you, Director DeMar. Um. Director's notice of motion.
No.
We're.
The prince of Lord, ain't he?
So I think it would be a very good time to, uh, break for lunch, obviously, and then. This could be in the whole recess.
We knew what was done, all we got left is a debrief, right?
Uh. Oh, wait, dear, for Angela.
Sorry, thanks. Through the chair, um, we do have the recommendations from the COW meeting in relation to the strategic plan. That need to be moved through the board, um, and then. Lunch is ready, um, and then there is the debrief. Um, we could do number sixteen, which is moving those recommendations from the COW and get that thing.
Yes.
And then recess for lunch.
We could also have our lunch and bring it in here and debrief it.
Oh, you love to change your minds. So moves.
All right, thank you. Um, Angela, the recommendations from the committee of the whole. We, uh.
So, yes, please, do you want me to speak to them? Can we just, you can just move them right through and they'll be captured in a minute. If, and you need to reminder of what those motions are, I may not be contributing to the group.
Yes, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, so those are just moved along, yeah, and then we adjourn the committee of the whole.
We need to carry.
We're in regular.
I need a lunch.
Yeah, we're in regular now, we're so close, it's right there.
All questions, all questions.
Okay. Be okay with, we're going to turn the recording on again, just in order to create a motion to. Go into closed.
Terminate the other meeting and go back to.
Terminated the COW, because we had, we terminated the COW.
Did we terminate it, Sal?
Good, okay.
Yep.
Well, I think it was there, yeah. I get, I get confused when.
It was there.
And the purpose of turning on the live stream is just to have a motion to go into close, moved by Director Richmond, seconded by Director Cross. Thank you.